The Wood Selectment Meeting for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. It is six P M. Can I please have everybody stand before I play the lead?
I play the lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. So everybody is aware, we are recording via W C A T six, which is our local access network. We are also available via Zoom, the application, and live streaming for Facebook. If anybody else is recording, please let us know, so we can let the public know. To meet the requirements for the Zoom, please identify who you are by name and what your position is, or if you're a resident of the town, and that meets our requirements for town. And the, the app. So thank you, everybody, for that. Okay, first thing on the agenda is discussion with the highway surveyor on proposed projects for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, Chapter ninety funds, and an update on the one million ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars in funding for storms of July sixteenth to July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and July twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Okay. Welcome. How you doing, Jeremy?
Doing very well.
You've been really busy these days.
Yes. Not a bad thing, but, you know, it's the season, one season's the next.
We're gonna start sending out the police chief looking for you to make sure you're still in town somewhere, because you're always working.
I'm around, always. Anyway, yeah.
So what do you got?
So this year, Chapter ninety, getting a little extra funding through a couple of extra programs, shared, shared funds and rural funds as well, which kicks us up a little bit. We're getting, I think it's like two hundred and eighty-two thousand for Chapter ninety. And then with the other programs, it brings us up a little over, a little over five hundred thousand, five hundred fifty thousand, somewhere there. And so we've had a pretty good list of streets and roads that we plan to work on. We're gonna start with doing some surface treatments. So pavement preservation, it's a big thing that the state has been pushing. So it basically to take a roadway that's in fairly decent condition and put a, a surface treatment on it to helpfully make it last longer. So that's probably the more inexpensive way to go with the prices being so high. I think we got a quote, our, our bid was five dollars and seventy-five cents a square yard for what's called a rubber chip seal. So it's basically like a half inch, quarter to half inch layer of stone asphalt and recycled rubber that's actually attached back to the surface of the road. The process involves, first, we are, we're prepping the roads now. We've been doing tons and tons of tree work, cutting back all the branches and stuff to get the sunlight back to the road. We're gonna have to be sweeping and really cleaning all the edges. I have a company coming in to do what's called shim paving. So they're gonna come, there's certain sections of these roads where there's some sinking and cratering and heavy cracking. They'll put a thin shim, shim layer of fine asphalt over the top of that. Then we have a company that comes in and does crack sealing behind them to seal the road back up tight. And then the rubber chip seals then put on after that. So the list for that starts as Lower Coy Hill to the bottom of Town Farm Road. And we're gonna do Old West Warren Road all the way from the, from Coy Hill to the Lights in West Warren, Cross Street and Columbus Street. Also, we're gonna do Lower Town Farm Road. There's a section, probably half a mile, quarter, about a third of a mile up. And then Reynolds Road as well, up to the dirt. So they're all decent roads, okay condition, starting to deteriorate fairly quickly. We don't do anything with them. Five years, we're gonna be patching potholes left and right. So kinda now's the chance with this process, we should get it pretty good. They save pretty much about ten years more out of the life of the road. So again, with the prices going up, let's take what we have that's in decent condition and make it better, make it last. That process with the combination of the chip seal, the crack sealing and the shim, we've estimated out, we're probably looking around three hundred to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for about three miles of road, which is very cheap compared to repaving the roads. As we have, the next process coming in is we're gonna do three streets over. We have Prospect Street, Richardson Street, and then Lower East Road from Washington Street to sixty-seven. All streets that are, well, the Prospect and Wash, and Richardson are part of the more, more school street neighborhood project where we have funding for grants that are, have redone those streets. Well, unfortunately, the surface work, it's kinda left to us. We're not gonna do it as extensively as the grant would have paid for as was, as a reclaim, reclamation, dig the whole road up, grind down a foot, turn everything back in, redo all your surface structures. That's very expensive. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna come in, we're gonna mill off the top, re-profile the road. So we reshape it, so it's got a nice crown, the water goes to the edge, it takes all the ridges and bumps and everything out, and then we're gonna pave a new surface layer over. It isn't determined yet, depending on when we grind it, how it looks, we might end up having to do two layers, which is gonna be a little more expensive, but it'll make the street last a lot longer. We're also gonna do new sidewalks on Prospect Street and the short section on Richardson Street as well, kinda help finish the neighborhood, along with the school street and Oda Street, which is part of our C B G and One Stop this year, grant, which we've accepted, obviously been awarded both of those. Lower East is same setup, we're just gonna mill, profile it, overlay it, may build it back so it's a strong street again, not gonna do anything with the sidewalks there. There's one sidewalk that's completely unusable, it's all grown in, mounted up. And the other side is actually fairly good shape, but it only goes about a third of the way up the road. So we're just gonna cut the line right at the sidewalk and redo that. So as far as Chapter ninety, those streets, we're looking around two hundred thousand to do those, those three streets. So with the two sidewalks included. So that's kinda exhausts most all of our funds that we get. I'd like to leave some in the bank, just in case you have emergency projects. The state has become streamlined with approving emergency funding for those projects. So if we had a, a washout or a road come apart and I needed money quick, the state has a setup now where we can access our Chapter ninety funds to quickly fix or repair a road, like within a day. Like I could call them today and pretty much have the funding okayed for tomorrow. So it's that fast now. But of course, they're redoing their system now for the fourth time in two years, which is a nightmare. But they have, they're gonna give us new training on it, so that'll be fun. So that pretty much wraps up our Chapter ninety for this year. It equals, you know, it's a, it's a good chunk of roadway.
And for the money, to be clear, so everybody knows the numbers and it's accurate. From Chapter ninety, we're getting two hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-three cents. And is that also Chapter ninety, or is it the extent, it's a D, it's for D two communities?
Yeah.
That's the rural, extra.
The rural, extra. And Warren was awarded a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. So for a total, it comes up to four hundred thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. So that is the total amount that we get.
Yeah, there was another award we had, it's a different program, but it ties into the same setup as Chapter ninety. So and it's essentially, they're formatting it the same way, and we got a chunk of money from them too, so that kicks it up even a little bit more.
Almost up to five hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's, we're actually a little over five hundred, so. Anyway, yeah, that's.
And that doesn't go a long way these days.
Unfortunately, if I wasn't doing the preservation, if we were just paving roads. So last year, we did Bemis Road, we did two miles of road, and I did it right before our asphalt contract expired. So our asphalt contract has almost doubled from last year to this year. So I paid Bemis Road for about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the asphalt. That would be almost six hundred thousand if I did it right now.
So this would even pay for doing one road.
For what I did at Bemis Road last year. So unfortunately, that's the path we're, we're on and the money.
So would people complain about roads and say, hey, why hasn't my road been done? And well, that's because it's very expensive and we don't have a lot of money to do this.
Yep.
You're gonna do the worst ones you can.
That's it, you gotta find, and you have to find ways to be creative to stretch the dollar. You know, we do so much of the work in-house, and that keeps our costs way down. So we do all our own prep work, all our own drainage work. We do as much of the own, as the tree work as we can possibly do by ourselves. I mean, again, we stretch it in every direction, just to, to get every penny to cover anything we can. So I mean, I, I'd say we're fortunate that we're set up now to be able to handle that, because most communities cannot do that. They have to go out to contractors, to bids, to, so.
Which costs a lot more money.
Costs a lot more money, which is why, you know, you give a street that's gonna cost us, you know, almost a million dollars, where I take a million dollars and cover two miles, three miles of road, they're covering a half a mile, a quarter of a mile of road, because it's just so much money to bring in contractors. So that's kinda, that's how we are able to do so much with the little we get, so.
You guys are doing an awesome job, and I see it, you know, I, I knew we were looking at one of the, well, on another town's website, and they were actually complimenting what Warren does, so.
On another town's website?
Yeah. Oh, not their website, but on a Facebook page.
Oh.
So, and they were complimenting.
All right, good to know which town.
They're close.
Yeah. So anyway, the, the other part of this conversation too is the, the one, nearly one point one million we got from ARPA, which is, the lion's share is this year, we're going after Coy Hill. So it's nearly two miles, complete reconstruction from just above Town Farm Road up to, not the last resident, but the second to last resident was where we're go, we're stopping. The last resident of the road is another three quarters of a mile down. And it costs a lot of money to finish the road for one person, or one household. And they're very much happy that we're not doing it, they like it the way it is, so.
I like my side, because I'm on the other side. I'm not on that side, I'm of the hill, I'm on the other side of, of Coy Hill. And my road's all dirt. And you guys, you guys do a great job filling in the potholes and.
We were driving your road today.
But it's not worth it to pay.
And it's, and the, just for the short money, I mean, your road's a perfect example. Five years ago, when I took over, your road turned into mud ruts. Every spring, every winter, we got to the point where it was, it was very difficult for residents to get in and out. Through just a few years of putting some money, a little bit of money, a little bit of time every year, we built the base of the road up, we've changed some of the materials, we fixed some of the drainage problems. And even though it's extremely wet right now, your road is dry and smooth and nice. And yeah, it's got a few holes, but that's what's gonna happen, it's a gravel road.
It slows the speeders down.
So, but we're making improvements everywhere we can. It's, it's a, you know, we have sixty-four plus miles of road, and there's just a lot of directions to go. And not enough people and not enough time. So as I was, I was saying before the meeting, I wish we could work more hours and more days, but unfortunately, we can't. But yeah, Coy Hill too, that's gonna be a big project, hundreds of thousands of dollars in drainage, reclamation, grinding the entire road, tons of tree work. And then just the, just the paving bill alone, it's virtually the same as what we did on Bemis. So you're looking at six hundred plus thousand just to put the asphalt down. And never mind the side work, you have all the driveway aprons, drainage swales, catch basin inlets, on and on and on. So unfortunately, I'm figuring Coy Hill is gonna cost us around nine hundred to, nine hundred thousand to a million to do. So, but we'll never touch it again, at least in all of our lifetime, so. Unless that develops and they sell all those beautiful fields up there to houses, which I, we, I hope.
I don't want.
Never, ever do, such a beautiful place.
It is, it's beautiful stuff.
But thanks to the state utilizing those ARPA funds for that storm relief on that day, which we have, actually, unfortunately, we have nine roads on the list to, can be repaired using that one point one million dollars, and it's really only gonna fix probably two. Coy Hill, and then the other one's gonna fight it out between next year, between Santos Road or O'Neill Road. And it's, it's a tough one, because they're both horrible conditioned roads and have a lot of problems, and we're not gonna have enough money to do it, so.
You're doing the best with what you got.
Exactly.
And that's all we can do, that's all we can ask you to do, and residents need to understand, it's a rural town, it doesn't have a lot of money, and we heavily depend on grants and.
That's it.
These things, and, you know, it's nice to get money from storm relief here and there, but we have to pay a price for a while of it because of it.
That's it.
Because it does a lot of damage.
Unfortunately, but then the weather doesn't look like it's holding up. I mean, another rain, wind, storm coming in tomorrow, it's just weekly, it's, so.
Yeah, I was looking, it looks like it added a couple more rain days to the week, because I was hoping it was gonna be nice and clear on Sunday. Now it's gonna rain a little bit.
Yep. And next week, still talking rain coming in again.
Yeah.
So a couple nice days followed by a few rainy days.
I don't wanna hear anybody say, there's a drought, because I ain't seeing a drought around here.
I like a drought.
Yeah, it'd be nice for a little while, have a few sunny days.
We could fix some things.
You know, we don't even get the advantage of like Florida, at least at Florida, it rains in the morning and the afternoon, it's like it never even rained.
No.
Yeah, we don't get that.
No.
It just stays gloomy all day.
Yeah, we're the new Washington State.
Yeah, like Washington now.
Yeah, a bunch of whiners.
Can never complain about we don't have water.
Bunch of whiners.
Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't.
No.
Yeah, kudos to the highway department. And also, what I'm gonna ask, if you already thought about it, great, if not, consider it.
After, when doing the road, painting and signage included?
Yep.
For safety?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's expensive too, and we, I like to do more of it. We're gonna, we have a little bit of money set aside, I already have this year to do a bunch of line painting. I'm just gonna wait and see what the numbers are per foot. It's gone up a lot. So we used to be able to paint, you know, paint lines for four to six cents a foot, it's now twelve to sixteen cents a foot. There's a lot of feet in a mile. Double yellow is double the price, and that's single white for the outside. We're gonna do a bunch of our own, hopefully this year, we're gonna get some stop lines, crosswalks and stuff. I got the guys are, they, they worked on it quite a bit last year, learning how to run our new paint machine. There, there's a learning curve to it, let's put it that way. They're, hopefully, they'll be, yeah, they're a little wig, we're a little wiggly, they got.
Isn't it a DUI? No, he's just following the line.
They painted some stuff they probably shouldn't have tried, they weren't quite to that level yet, but.
Jerry's back, they're like, oh, don't call me for that.
I called him.
I was on vacation, it's like, hey, are we trying to set up downtown for DUIs? No, it's, it's a work in progress, but yes, line painting is definitely gonna be a big push this year.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because I at least have a, have a dozen of videos showing where cars just crossed the line, or where the line was.
Yeah, well, and the other thing you realize too, the more you watch traffic and understand what goes on, you can paint all the lines you want, you can put up all the signs you want, you can't fix bad drivers, and they're everywhere.
You can't change stupid.
That's correct. Can't fix stupid.
Exactly, but it will be much easier for the user, have a video showing where the guy crossed the line and hit me in the front.
Yes, that is helpful.
All right. You guys have any?
Anything else?
No, I just wanted to commend the highway department for their great work that they've done with Lucy Stone. They put in all the signs at Lucy Stone.
Beautiful.
You know, those signs are phenomenal, the, the, you know, they, they did a really nice job in a matter of forty-eight hours. That, that, that job is now complete in.
The ball field?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did all the baseball fields over this week, they came out awesome.
Yeah. Other towns noticed?
Yeah.
And said, why can't we do that in our town?
Yeah, so it's good. It, it's really a nice, so thank you to you and your crew, Jerry, for all that hard work. A lot of residents have commented to me, and they really appreciate it.
Good, excellent. That's what I'm here for.
It shows your leadership, and because it takes somebody to guide everybody, and you guys, you are definitely the leader that they need, and this town needs to be able to make this stuff happen, and you're doing an awesome job, and your guys love you. Because we don't pay them a whole lot compared to the rest of the towns, but they are loyal to you, and they stick by you, and they do whatever you need them to do.
Pretty much the only highway department that's fully staffed anywhere around. And I've been that way for a couple of years, so. People, actually, people asking, well, even if somebody left, I have people who are asked to, is there any openings, is there any openings, any openings? I'm like, no, sorry, fully staffed, so it's lucky.
That is awesome.
Yeah.
I just wanna make it public that I, I really believe that our highway department is highly capable of doing what they're doing. Your, your, your knowledge, it's in, in much value for the town. Just wanna say that.
Understand, they're not just taking care of our roads, but they're taking care of our parks, our cemetery, everything.
They're highly qualified for the job.
Yeah, the guys are great, we all work together well. Everybody's there for each other.
Parks praises you guys too, because their park, the parks haven't looked as good.
Yeah.
Ever.
We got plans, we're gonna keep making them better too, that's everything, roads, parks, cemetery. It's a slow process, but we're pecking away at it, we're, we're improving everything every year. You know, just, just trying to give the whole town just a better look from, you know, one, one end to the other. So that's, make it nicer for our residents, and people will be jealous if they wanna move to our town.
Well, people are getting jealous, because they're talking about on Facebook, you're like, why can't we be like Warren? Which I take as a great compliment.
Oh, absolutely.
Because I sit there like, yeah.
Yeah. It's not, it's not something you would have heard much of in the past, and now you definitely hear a lot more of it. So people are, you know, there's always been a good group of people in this town. This town has been amazing town for a long time, but it's more public now, you know, with Facebook, social media, where everything's broadcast on television, conversations go, people talk, and we're definitely taking the town in a, in a really positive direction in the last half a dozen years or so. I'm proud of my work, proud of my guys, and happy to be here.
Proud of you, and all your guys. So, you guys have any other comments?
Good.
Anybody from the public have anything? Madeline?
They do a great job, they do a really good job.
One, one thing I wanna, I wanna include fire and police is that when things happen, all you guys talk to each other and work as a big team, that's very important. So thank you.
Yeah, I, I've seen all the towns where highways like, fire department, police department calls highway, and they're like, yeah, no, we'll get there when we get there, and then.
They're always there to help us, anytime we need anything, they're always there, they listen to the radio, especially in the winter storms, they hear an ambulance call come in, they're there with a plow to help us out. They do it all the time, if we have a piece of equipment we can't use, we ask them if they can use it, you know what I mean? It's just, it's a good working relationship, I think we all, we all work together, and Jeremy's got a great crew, and he's, he's a good guy, so.
He needs the time to work.
Yeah, it's definitely, all the departments are, we're in a very good place, so.
I, I hear a lot more people talking about how they're proud to be from Warren now. Where people used to be like, um, Westbrook Field, I'm next to Westbrook Field. Now people like, I'm from Warren. It's great to see.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jeremy, do you have anything else for us, sir? I know you're busy, so I don't wanna take a lot of your time.
On the run, my day starts at four A M., so. It goes.
He's ready to go to bed.
That's all, last meeting, I would have been here last week, but after plowing all night and all the next day.
We knew.
I was, I, I took, I actually took a nap.
Right after the storm, well, like, yeah.
I took a nap, and I was gonna try and come back, and I fell asleep, and I woke up, and it was eight-thirty. I'm like, whoa, I guess I missed the meeting.
No, no, we were still going. Ten, eleven o'clock, we're still.
Oh, you were still going, I could have come down.
We're trying to get our meetings to about eleven, eleven-thirty now.
That's right, you have to take a break at eight o'clock, intermission.
Yeah.
Eight-thirty's intermission.
So it could be like Warren after night, Warren after dark.
Yeah.
Warren uncensored.
All right.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much.
Have a great evening.
You too. All right, next thing on the agenda, Police Department March Monthly Report. Chief, how you doing?
Good, how are you? Chief, Warren P D? All right, so a bunch of, yeah, a bunch of march. The month of March, we logged fifteen hundred and nineteen calls of service, investigated three felonies, wrote sixty-six incident reports, there was one on view arrest, three Warren arrests, twenty sunnies that are at rest, for a total of twenty-four, one protected custody, and one juvenile arrest. There were two hundred and nine motor vehicle stops with a hundred and fifty-one citations. On the first of the month, I know it was the school officials to go over our upcoming lockdown drill. That drill was successfully completed at all three schools in the district on March eleventh. I just wanna thank all the departments that assisted, the fire department, and Adam and his guys, my guys that were there, Westbrook Field P D who was there, Brookfield, and the state all assisted with that. On the fifth, all three of our new officers attended a driver training that was sponsored by Mr. Ferrera, founded from our insurance provider, Maya. So they went to Braintree Town Hall, and that was a classroom, and they had a simulator too. Then on the sixth, I met with the finance committee to present the police department budget. On the seventh, I attended our first meeting of the levy committee, so I got to learn about the levy.
Lucky you.
Jimmy's our chair. On the eleventh, obviously, after the lockdown drill, I attended a post-commission meeting. They, they went over, they're gonna be doing a new portal, online portal for all our reporting. Then on the twelfth, I conducted a ride-along with a new hire from the Rutland Regional Dispatch. What they do is when they hire someone, that dispatcher has to go to each community and do a ride-along, and we show them all the highlights of each.
Get an idea of what they're talking about over the radio.
Yep. Obviously, we show them like the schools, the bars, the alcohol establishments, certain roads, highway, where the fire departments are, all those stuff. So when someone radios in, it kinda gives them an idea where they are. On the nineteenth, we attended our quarterly domestic violence task force meeting while Chief Fergie were and Chief A, of Harwood and Braintree. On the twentieth, Town Administrator Ferrera held a department head meeting with all our department heads. Then on the twenty-first, I attended Massachusetts Chief's Police Meeting in the town of Sutton. And finally, on the twenty-seventh, they attended the Chris, the customer service training that was put on by the town administrator here in the town hall.
Okay. And then you also met with the town administrator about your articles.
Oh, yes.
Very good. All right, did you have anything else to add, Chief?
No, I think that's it.
No?
No.
Did you have anything?
I don't, no, good job.
Did you have a chance to go yesterday to the M C P, the Massachusetts Chief Police Associations?
Oh, we went to. Oh, we went to, um, I didn't get, we went to a, uh.
Injured on duty, uh, training, sponsored by Maya.
Yeah, so I didn't get to go to that.
Oh, missed it, it was good stuff over there.
Did you go?
I was there, yeah.
Alright, um, Ms. Farrar, did you have anything?
No.
And I just have to say, the police officer's been doing an outstanding job. Was it Charles for the, um, Lucy Stone event with the East Egg Hunt? Very friendly police officer, he was engaging with everybody in the public, did an outstanding job, um, and very impressive, looks very professional. And, you know, he did a good job there at the event, um, which was nice, he's, again, he's very friendly. People had no problem walking up to him and just talking with him and he's very nice.
Yes, he is, yep, he's great.
It's, it's great to see that and, you know, seeing our police officers engaging with the public and knowing that they can be talked to and that they're there for them, so, great job with that and, you know, again, you guys are doing an outstanding job in your departments. And, you know, I noticed the one thing is you got a cruiser getting up to seventy-one thousand miles. Is that being replaced?
That's a nice one, that's the high mileage, the highest.
Yeah, that's, you got that for an article to be replaced?
Uh, that won't probably be up till next year.
Were you doing capital plan planning?
Yeah, so that's in capital plan for next year.
Are you using that one a lot still?
Yep, we're still doing, using them, they're trying to spread out the mileage so it doesn't, usually we only had two, so the mileage would go way through the roof.
Yeah.
Now, what we have, we can space it out so we don't have to replace them, so.
You're using the, the four? Are you using four?
Yep, four.
And then one's your vehicle?
Right.
And then the Hummer?
Humvee hasn't been used for a while.
Yeah.
Ronnie's got a, there's some kinda hose that goes from the transmission and it rotted, so we just have to replace it.
So it's not getting any fluid in the transmission? Yeah, it's a good vehicle to have for events and stuff.
Yeah, the kids like it, they can crawl over it and not damage it.
Just, you know, I don't want you getting up, I don't wanna get in a situation where we have vehicles at a hundred and thirty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand miles again.
Yep.
You know, let's make sure we get them replaced, so, alright, awesome, thanks, Chief.
Actually, I know Jimmy will probably talk about it, they're doing the town like cleanup on the twentieth.
Yep.
Trying to secure a Semlack motorcycle for that day to drive around town, so.
Oh, nice.
If I hear anything, I'll let you guys know.
Alright, is somebody from Semlack doing it, or you guys gonna ride it?
No, no.
Come on now.
I wish.
We don't have a motorcycle guy yet?
No.
Yeah, yeah, you do.
Teach you how to dump it.
Alright, um, next thing up is the Fire Department March Monthly Report. Welcome, Chief, how you doing?
Yeah, good evening, thank you for having me tonight, Adam Mavoy, Fire Chief. Uh, so for the month of, of March, we responded to thirty-six fire calls, uh, four motor vehicle accidents, two medical assists, uh, eight activated alarms, uh, one gas emergency, two investigations, uh, we had six calls that were canceled as false alarms, uh, that we were canceling the route. Uh, six service calls, two brush fires, uh, two good intent calls, uh, one electrical equipment malfunction and two rescues or extrications that were required. We responded to sixty-eight calls EMS related calls in March of two thousand twenty-four and nineteen ALS intercepts were required for those calls. Uh, we did a bunch of inspections, which included, uh, four smoke and CO inspections for, uh, new housing, uh, that was, that's come in. We've actually seen an, an increase in, in some of the houses being built in town, which is a nice thing, um, so we've seen some, some of that stuff happening.
There's a lot more, I see a lot of foundations going in around town.
Yep, so then we've seen, uh, we've seen, uh, some growth there, so that's really good. One O L R inspection, seven liquid propane inspections. Uh, for activities, uh, we had Warren EMS held a protocol update class every once in a while, OEMS, uh, will update some of the protocols that we have to abide by and we're required, we're required to update our, our EMTs on those protocols by a certain date. So every once in a while, we have to hold a class for those protocol updates, make sure that all of our staff receive that training to, uh, make sure they know there's a new step in place and some sort of treatment for, for some sort of, uh, illness. Our fire department personnel continued training on our new engine four, um, and we also held a training that was kind of a group, uh, um, group building experience. We've been doing a lot of these where especially with our pneumatic equipment, which we're in the process of looking at through replacing, through capital planning, some of that equipment. Uh, we do certain evolutions that require a team effort in the sense that, you know.
Just give him a second, he might be right back, if not, we'll just go to Jimmy. Coming right back?
If you want, just go to the next agenda item, I'll just.
Come on up, Jim. Okay, next thing on the agenda, we're gonna table the fire department because Chief has to deal with something. He's always working, so, you know, it's great to have him around town, just sometimes he gets pulled out of here too. So next thing on the agenda is emergency management for February and March monthly reports. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, James McKeon, Emergency Management Director, um, here with the, uh, emergency management report for February and March, two months. Uh, February fourth, we did our, uh, the sirens tests. Uh, the one biggest snow event of February gave us about four to five inches of snow on the thirteenth. February twenty-second, I attended a EMD meeting at the Shrewsbury Police Department, that was more of just the Worcester County EMDs. Uh, went over the regional capabilities that NEMA can offer, help us out with. Also a presentation from the, uh, Health and Medical State Coalition. And, uh, then it, meeting concluded with, uh, Central Mass Animal Response Team did a presentation too. Lot of information in that meeting. Then, uh, February twenty-fourth, we assisted the Quavo High School Cheerleaders, uh, with their competition. So they had about sixteen different teams, so imagine sixteen buses in front of the school and then all their parents and spectators. So we had the front of school, all buses, and both parking lots packed, so we had, uh, a couple people from Charleston even helped. We have about five cert people, from two thirty to six, uh, we've helped them out the last, uh, this competition with the last couple of years. One of the larger, biggest events, you know, imagine just a baseball, uh, baseball game when there's a couple buses and everyone. But this is sixteen different. Yes, the gyms full.
It was amazing, you, you did a really good job.
Yes. Do you want to do, finish my?
Good.
So in March, moving to March now, uh, we did the test of the sirens on the third, um, had another EMD quarterly meeting on March twelfth. They, that highlighted, uh, a drone, um, program. The Greenfield Fire Department came and talked about their regional drone program.
Are we still doing, sorry, we still doing our drone thing?
Uh, we're, yeah, that's.
Was about to do the first solo.
Nice.
Yes, yeah, we're, we're, we're working up to that. Little by little, a lot of crashes.
No crashes so far.
Alright, good. March twentieth, we had our, uh, monthly cert meeting, we focused, uh, had a training video, had another training set up, uh, but it got canceled at the last minute. We were gonna do a webinar with the MRC, which is a medical, another medical volunteer group. And the, uh, we're gonna go over child, uh, care, safety and, uh, sheltering, but that got canceled, so we focused on another, uh, training video coping, uh, in emergency situations and stressful, uh, trying to, uh, that wouldn't work that well. We had something, had a backup plan.
Very good.
Then the next day, I attended a course with the ICS two hundred, uh, forms, which these can be used in emergencies and public events. Uh, it was hosted by NEMA, um, through Westbrook Field.
And ICS is Incident Command System?
Yes, Incident Command System. Then, that's following Saturday the twenty-third, we had our first little ice storm. Uh, wasn't too bad on the surface of roads, uh, but in the trees, we got about quarter to a half an inch of ice, which was just on the borderline of causing problems with power lines and stuff, but it really didn't.
I was very surprised we didn't have much more damage after that, because I expected a lot more.
We're literally on the, uh, the degrees of disaster, I'd call it, uh, yeah. A little higher places were affected. And then March twenty-fifth, I attended a railroad safety course, uh, put on by the Federal Railroad Association, Operation Lifesaver. And in conjunction with the town of Burling, they ran it, attended that, they offered that up. That's pretty much my report, um, just a drone, been working with Derek over the last month or so on satellites and learning about drones and stuff and, uh, that's.
Yeah, so, safety first, all the knowledge, you know, I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-eight, before the drone era, so.
Before they became a fad.
So, I, I believe all that experience, you know, translated to these guys, it's, it's valuable, so, but if we ever get a grant, so we can get a, 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 a big drone for, to help everybody, we are all knowledge-based and ready for the test, so.
Starting of a.
We're still working on that, Chief, right?
I tried one last year, I got denied.
Yeah, there's always this year and the year after and eventually we'll get one.
Something like thirty-seven thousand dollars, cause the infrared camera costs the most.
Yeah.
But even, we could use a low level one.
Cert has one, one little guy that could do, not the, uh, infrared, but other stuff.
Even if we can get eyes on somebody, because they can cover a lot of ground.
Even when, when he goes and inspects the, uh, um, Beaver Dam, you know, and takes some pictures, he can go up a little bit and take some pictures, you know, things like those, I think is a great use for the.
You had to mention those dams, didn't you? With rain events coming too.
There is a, uh, they're, they are working on them in this, that area though.
Trapping them?
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, every time it rains, I sit there and I think like, ah, these dams, it just keeps on building up that water and, you know.
I did expect that, I believe maybe back in March sometime, or February, you know, weren't somewhere, took a walk down there and the dam was built back in a weaker formation and with sticks, um, but we've had some pretty good rain since and it is something.
Did it break it down a little bit?
Uh, it, it, it's built back in the same, same place it had been many times, but just the beavers aren't building it back with thick, uh, mud like the rest of the dam is.
So is it flowing through, or is it?
It's.
Is it a problem?
Yeah, well, it hasn't been for, it's, 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 it's built back, we'll just believe it at that. And like I said, I believe the issue is getting somewhat addressed.
Get rid of as many of the beavers as you can? You know, only if we could teach them how to build houses, you know, and not dams everywhere.
Stronger dams.
Set them all down in Maryland, they could rebuild that bridge.
There you go.
Teach them how to weld.
Alright, um, anything else, sir?
This is, you mentioned the town cleanup day coming up, um, I know, is, are you gonna talk about that later on?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, but if you want, it's on night, number ten, you hanging around until then?
Yeah, I can, yeah, oh, we'll keep that. The only other thing, uh, talked a little bit about the levy, we had our first levy committee, uh, we had a first couple, uh, site views, some contractors, vendors come out to look at, uh, those, uh, blood gates within the building.
Yeah.
We're trying, the committee decided to, uh, focus on those first, so we might have a couple, uh, proposals coming up.
Probably work on some of vegetation too, because vegetation's an easy thing, you know, and probably get out there and clean up some of that, at least bring it down, because they were talking about, as long as you drop it down to chest level, but we can get it down lower, because summer's gonna let it grow up and we're probably not gonna get it to a while, you know? I'd even go out there with a.
You'd probably have to, uh, look at it in different segments, or different sections, uh, per year.
We gotta remember, we gotta do the other side too, we gotta figure out how to get to the other side.
Yep.
Other side of the river, so, and that's where it's really overgrown, you know, so.
So there'll be more, uh, more updates on that in coming meetings, I'll get on the agenda for, talk about that more. Once we have some more meetings with the media and stuff.
Be nice to be able to pick off some of those things off of that list from the Corps of Engineers, because, when are they coming out for another levy inspection?
Probably the fall, yeah.
If we can do a, a bunch of that, like, show them that we're doing something.
Yeah, that's what, something, we're in motion.
Yeah, very good. Do you have anything else, then?
Uh, that's pretty much it, just the, you know, the weather pattern too, it, look ahead to, uh, pretty mid, uh, through the spring here. It almost looks like it's gonna keep this kinda, I don't know, three, four days of maybe sun, back to some rain. Uh, maybe June or July, it might start turning to a drier.
Yeah, it's gonna be a problem because, again, the trees being sat, the ground being saturated so much, the water is not gonna be able to go anywhere. So, it's only so far it can go.
Yeah, there's only so much water to get fit in the ground before it keeps.
Yeah, no, well, that's not good news.
No, but I tried to.
We definitely gotta take out some of those beavers.
Yeah.
Cause the last thing I wanna do is another breach in the town.
Yeah.
Washing out an entire neighborhood. I would on that one, alright? Do you have any questions, sir?
The railroad safety course, is that for, um, like a derailment or something, or?
Um, well, this, this kind of, uh, covered, uh, all the general round safety between different kinda railcars, to parts of the engines, um, a little bit about, uh, railroad crossings, which we don't have many railroad crossings around town, so we would go by mile markers and stuff.
Everything's bridges, we have, they go over the roads.
Yes, break, uh, bridges, um, there is, this course that he taught, uh, was more towards that general area, but they are willing to kinda set up course for the area more, but the main line here, spoke to them, so. In time, maybe we could have some, that railroad course come, you know, here.
They're, they're established on, did they already, they already established a braking system in West Warren for runaway train? Do they get that in there now, cause I know they're talking about.
I know they have.
Cause it's a braking, if you get a runaway train or a train that's not going.
Is what they have in West Warren is every time a train goes by, it counts the axles, so if, if the train or a derailment or something dragging, uh, it lets the train know so they could stop, that's why if you happen to see a train stop behind these axles, usually they hit the brakes, they get the alert, and they'll hit the brakes and they'll stop behind them, that's about where they stop, then they have to check the whole train uh, for defects or a problem.
Very good. Yeah, I, I heard something that they were gonna put an automatic braking system, if it's loose train or trains going excessive, they would stop braking it.
Yeah, like I said, right now, they have that detector that lets the train know if there's a problem. And that's been for a few years.
Do you have anything else, sir?
No, that's it. No, that's it. Good job. Nope, keep up the good work, Jim.
Mr. Conrad, you had something for me?
Yes, uh, uh, Jimmy, did you get the background information on levee that I printed out?
Yes, I, I do have that, thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The chief just ran out again. Alright, so we'll go to the next one, uh, discussion on possible appointment of Sheila A., is it Hunkins?
Yes.
Hunkins?
Yeah.
At step one, to the position of part-time clerk in the assessor's office, anticipated vote. Good evening, welcome to the meeting.
Oh, thank you.
So, you wanna be the clerk for the assessor's office?
Yes.
Okay.
If that's.
Okay, yeah, yeah, um, now, you're a resident of Warren?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's awesome to have, um, a resident as an employee, we try to give our residents opportunities within the town, and hire from the town first, um, so that's awesome to see that. Yeah, you're gonna be, not only you're a resident of town, but now you're gonna be an employee too.
Appreciate it, yeah, sure, sounds good.
Do you have anything that you would like to talk to us about, explain yourself, or talk, you know, tell us about yourself?
Um, I'm a twenty-two-year resident. Um, I have a nineteen-year-old daughter, she's in college. Um, I've, we've been living on Commons Pond Road for, um, twenty, twenty-two years. And we enjoy it here, and we like to be stakeholders in the community as much as possible, so.
Very good.
Yeah.
Have, have you ever worked in an assessor's office before?
I have not, and I plan on doing a little investigating, because I, I honestly don't know pretty much of anything.
Yeah, but you do have a background, you have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have a clerical background, yes, I went to secretarial school. Um, and received a certificate from there, um, and I, I have a clerical background myself, so, years ago. But it was, it's there and it was solid, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
So.
Now, well, when we vote, we'll congratulate you.
Okay, okay, okay.
Because then we gotta make it official, did you have anything for us, sir?
I do not.
Do you have anything, sir?
Uh, Mrs. Hunkins, I'm sorry, I'm very bad with names, but I know you by face.
Yes, we've, I've, I've known you from the, the elementary school, I used to see you there a lot, and I think you were there for my daughter's high school graduation.
I, I did, I took the pictures, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so I, I just wanna just digress a little bit and explain the process that we had, uh, where we arrived, uh, with Sheila, um, so, working in conjunctions, this is an appointment by the Board of Selectmen, um, as a clerical staff within the, uh, office of the assessors. Working in conjunction with the Board of Assessors, um, we, uh, we put the, the, um, the position out, um, for advertisement. It was advertised on Indeed, it was advertised in the Ware River News, they advertised on the town's website, uh, it was on our bulletin board outside, so, um, the job was posted, uh, for several weeks. Uh, we've had roughly about sixty candidates, uh, apply.
Six zeros?
Sixty, yeah, roughly about that, sixty candidates apply for the position.
And you beat them off?
And, 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 um, it was, um, you know, we had selected a, a group to interview, um, and, uh, the interviews were conducted by myself, uh, Chair Bruce Martin of the Board of Assessors, as well as, um, a member Karen Kelly-Garray, they were all invited to, to the interviews, uh, they were able to ask questions, and and it, and it was quite clear to everybody, um, that, that sat in on the interviews, that, uh, Ms. Hunkins, uh, was the clear, um, um, favorite candidate, that had the most experience with, with dealing with customer service, and she's a Warren resident. Um, so the stars were perfectly aligned, um, for, for this particular position. We, um, we, we wanted to move quickly, uh, in this position, in anticipation of, um, you know, one of our assistant assessor, uh, leaving us, so, um, you know, we would have the ability to have somebody in the office, clerical staff, to take messages, to get back to people, to have the door open, um, and, and we're asking um, all Warren residents to be mindful that Ms. Hunkins is, 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 is really friendly, and she's a really nice person, but she doesn't know all the inner workings of the assessor's office as of yet, so, just ask for some, some patience there. And she's gonna get, she's gonna be able to take care of all of the, um, you know, messages, and, and, and getting all of the information that's needed to go to the board members, um, for, uh, for important decisions and important information. So, um, this is very critical that we have, um, this position filled, so that we have somebody in there that can get these messages back to the board members, that the office is not dark, uh, and the office is open. This is a very positive step, uh, in moving the town forward, to make sure that we have, uh, services available for all our residents.
Thank you very much, sir. Pretty impressive, you beat sixty people.
I can't believe.
And we got sixty people applying, that's impressive.
No, that is wonderful.
So I have to ask, which, which direction did you use, how did you hear about it, how did you apply?
When did I hear about it, so, I basically heard about it online.
Okay.
Um, and I actually waited a little bit, and then I decided to apply.
Okay, and did you go Indeed, or through the website, or?
What did I do, I brought my, I brought my, um.
You brought your resume here?
Yes, I did.
Okay, alright.
So.
Very good, so we know online. So Facebook?
No, it was not Facebook, um, I believe I actually got some kind of like little email, almost from Indeed, I wanna say.
Yeah, we posted on.
And, and they thought that I might be like some kind of a candidate for this.
So it was through Indeed to help?
It's working.
I believe so, yeah, so.
Okay, Indeed does help, and.
Yes, indeed.
Yes, indeed. Very good, yes, sir.
Well, thank you very much, but.
I, I'm very happy for this, being you here, and I just wanna tell you something.
Okay.
None of these three guys you see in front, we have never ever had any experience sitting here, so you'll be fine.
Thank you, thank you.
And we do it.
I'm gonna try my best, that's for sure, yeah, so.
No, you'll, you'll be great, and, you know, you'll learn, and, you know, I, I have confidence we will be a valuable asset to the team, and I look forward to seeing what you can bring to, to the town.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anything you need, ask for help.
That's what Mr. Farrar has told me, yes.
Absolutely, and the woman that sits behind you right there, Madeline, she is a wealth of knowledge. She knows everything financial for the municipal government, and if you have any ideas, and you see her, pick her mind when you can.
I will add to the, add to the, um, conversation, um, that Jim, of course, knows I've lived in town for quite a few years. And he says to me, oh, do you know this lady, I said, sure do, I said, she's a regular customer down at the gas station, so I've known her. She came in, that's who I was curious, and I said to Jim, I said, um, boy, her daughter must be old now, so, because.
Well, she's older, yes.
Older now, because, I mean, with, you know, she grew up, and of course, I haven't been there now, I haven't been there for five years. So I knew she had to be a teenager, but I didn't know she was in college, but that's how long it's been, that we've, um, communicated.
Yeah.
At the gas station.
Time flies.
No, but I'm just saying that I know, you know, know, she, you know, was faithful to the gas station, you know, and, uh.
Very good.
Anyway, so, her daughter's nineteen, so it's not many years at least, so.
Very good, alright, ready for a vote?
Yep, so I'll make a motion to approve Sheila A. Hunkins as the part-time clerk in the assessor's office at step one.
Second.
All in favor?
Richard Harker, aye.
Denny Bittens, aye.
David Dufran, aye, the motion passes unanimously, and Ms. Hunkins, you are now a clerk in the assessor's office, congratulations.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Sign the paperwork, and you're gonna get sworn in, and that will be official.
Okay.
Doesn't the assessor slur?
No.
Nope.
Okay. The airplane, I thought they did.
Board of Selectmen appointment.
But I'll do it.
Yep, yep, so.
So we'll see you on Monday, on Tuesday morning, at eight-thirty.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Monday is a holiday for the state, Patriots' Day.
Okay.
Yeah, Marathon Monday, you're supposed to be running it, right?
Thanks, Ms. Hunkins, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay, appreciate it.
I'll be in the area.
Yep, thank you, Madeline, nice, nice.
Alright.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Very good, good night. Alright, and we're gonna go back to the fire chief, but he looks like he got called on an emergency, so, we'll just proceed on. Um, and if he comes back, then we'll, I, you know, talk with him more, but if not, we'll just catch up with him on a later date, um, he has a, an emergency he's responding to, okay? Next thing is review candidates for the position of parking clerk and possible appointment, anticipated vote. Okay, so, Mr. Farrar.
Thank you, sir, uh, and members of the, uh, board, the board had asked, uh, to have this posted or sent out internally. Uh, it was, uh, we sent it to all departments, uh, back on, uh, Monday, uh, April first. Uh, went out to all departments, um, for solicitation of letters of interest to serve, um, as our, um, uh, next parking clerk, um, they were due back Monday, uh, by noon, April eighth. Um, we had received, uh, two letters of interest, which are in your packet, um, one from tax collector Carrie Schmidt, and one from the assistant town clerk, Leslie Cook, both are in your packet for your consideration this evening.
Now, are there any conflict as far as special municipal employee for?
So, um, the, um, assistant town clerk, uh, because it is a, um, an appointed, uh, position, an employee, um, that would have to be, um, deemed as a special municipal employee.
And Carrie Schmidt has already been filling in the position, doing it.
Correct.
Through her office.
She's elected, so that's different.
And has there been any problems with her doing it at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you guys have any questions?
No, I don't know if I have questions, but I, it does seem like Carrie's probably the most qualified. She's already doing the job.
She's doing the job, and we also don't have to vote to make her a special municipal employee, um, which we kinda try not to do.
Yeah, especially for that, you know, I, I don't have any problem with either one, but their position, uh, one being elected and one being.
Appointed.
Appointed, it, it'll makes us a little bit difficult to, you know, to select one from the other one, right? So the easiest one is the one who's elected.
Yeah, no, I just, I, well, that's one of the reasons why I'm here, um, I just wanted to say that, um, when I was, well, I'm still here, but anyways, when I was the acting town accountant, but I've been sitting myself still the assistant town accountant. Um, I got, I received a phone call from Jim Farrar, the town administrator, and he said to me, can you come to the office for a minute? And I said, yep, that's fine, and he was there, Chief Mullett was there, and Carrie was there. So they wanted to know how the credit, uh, the service bureau, they call it, the service bureau, how the town paid them for the parking tickets.
Okay.
Um, so anyways, you know, they were talking about, you know, is it a revolving fund, and, you know, and stuff, and it's not, and so anyways, at that time, um, Mr. Farrar asked Carrie if she would be interested in taking on the position, you know, for the time. So I was just here for one, that was one reason, is to, you know, she's already doing the job.
Yeah.
The service bureau that clears the ticket, so like if somebody's licensed, they can't get it because it's not cleared, that's been a need, um, is Jefferies and Jefferies.
Which she's already working with.
That she's always working with, so she already has the interaction with the thing, and plus, you know, Carrie's been here a long time, you know, and I think Carrie's an excellent worker, so, um, I think that it makes sense where she's already been doing it.
Yeah.
Just to continue.
Very good, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your insight, um, did you guys have anything else? So, did you have anything, Mr. Farrar?
No, no.
Okay, I also think Carrie is probably the best choice for this, um, we, we do kinda frown upon appointing any employee as a special municipal employee, um, and, you know, Carrie has already been doing the job. She has the experience, and she has a rapport with the, um, collection agency, which is Jeffrey and Jefferies. Um, uh, so, you know, it, it makes, um, sense to continue with, with, with that, um, that, um, duty for her, um, and there's been no complaints about how she shouldn't be doing it, or any objections for her to do it, um, I would love to see, you know, Leslie doing some, some additional things, um, and training in different areas, and I know we've talked about that, training in different departments, so we don't have one point of weakness, we lose one poor person, and the town is shut down. You know, we like to have people kinda cross-trained a little bit to learn these jobs, so if somebody does leave, we can have somebody help out in that department and assist a little bit, um, so it helps anytime we can do that. And, you know, Carrie has stepped up already for that, um, you know, because again, you know, we've had some changes in the town, and she's taken over the duty, um, because nobody else was available to do it, so. I think she's probably the best choice, in my opinion, for, so, do you have anything?
No, no, I'm, Carrie's good.
I agree as well.
Okay, do you wanna do a vote?
Yep, I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Schmidt as the, um, parking clerk for a one-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Richard Harker, aye.
Derek Bittens, aye.
David Dufran, aye, the motion passes unanimously, okay. Alright, next thing on the agenda, review articles for the special town meeting and the annual town meeting warrants. And I don't think this is an anticipated vote, because again, we, this is just a draft of what's there. We, we have a long way to go.
And we can't vote for that draft, correct?
We could, but it's just gonna change in a week, so, um, first of all, anything related to police department, strike it down, get rid of that, they got enough.
I was gonna add something to the police.
Oh, were you?
Yeah.
No.
Too bad.
Alright, no, we're just joking, we love the police department. And we like the chief too.
What, we love the chief.
Yeah. Alright, so, the first page, as we go down, um, do you guys, well, we don't have a number for the regional district assessment, um, so we can't really decide on.
That's just the money that we would be getting, potentially getting back on the transportation. So, um, obviously, the FinCom has looked at some of, you know, most of these articles, um, they obviously are gonna recommend it. You know, it's just a matter of getting that number, I think Dawn is reaching out to get that number, um, from them.
So they, they have that, and then the town to vote transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Western Star Capital Stabilization Fund to complete the purchase and take any relative action there too, for the highway department. So is that to pay off a piece of equipment?
So that is for, um, that is for the Western Star that they recently purchased, um, and it was on order for several years.
I'm sorry, what's the Western Star, is that the loader?
That's the big plow truck, the big one.
Okay, the big plow.
Big one, huge, um, and that was on, um, that was on order for two years, it was a special custom-built. The, the truck cost two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
And we already accounted for the money, and we just.
Half of it was coming from Harpa, the other half was, uh, has to be released from this, from this article.
Alright, you guys good with that?
Yep, yes, sir.
Okay, Article three, to see if the town will vote to transfer eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars from. from receipts reserved for appropriation highway equipment fund to purchase new Buema Obama light module model S twenty-four dash S four forty-five stump grinder to be used on the department's Wacker Nielsen WL thirty-two loader, or take any action relative there, too. So, basically, this is a light bar for it?
Uh, no, this is a.
It's a stump grinder.
It's a stump grinder for it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's, it's a light model being versus heavy-duty model, it's a light model.
Yeah.
Okay. So, it's for a grinder for stumps?
Mm-hmm.
You guys have any questions about that?
No.
No?
No, sir.
Okay, to see if the town will vote to transfer five thousand from the highway equipment fund to the auction and surplus equipment account, or take any action relative there, too. What are they doing, why are they?
So, this is, this is for him to be able to purchase.
To purchase auction equipment?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys good?
Yeah.
I'm good, yeah.
Five, to see if the town will vote to transfer from precash the sum of, we don't know, for the fund, the ice, ice deficit, or any action relative there, too. So, we don't know what the amount is, but this is because we've had storms and.
Yeah, we, we will have a final accounting of where we are with snow and ice, I would say, within a week or two.
Yeah, Jeremy, when he sent the payroll, he had one client, he's called one person, and he's just waiting for that final bill, and then we'll have another one.
Okay. But that, well, that, that is on there, so we'll take that, you know, as part of the special town meeting to clear up any inequities.
Chief, did you wanna come up and finish up, or?
Sorry.
All right, so we'll move on to the chief, because he's a very busy man, apparently. So, we'll move back on to.
Three.
Three, which is the fire department March monthly report. And you've already gone through quite a bit of it, and you were talking about your activities. You done your inspections, right?
Yes, yes.
So, your own activities and meetings.
A little bit of a confusing call going on, so.
No, no, no.
So, yes, we, we are on activities and meetings, you know, we heard, held a protocol update for all of our EMS personnel for required updates for treatments for certain illnesses, and then we had, held an engine, held a training for our fire personnel for our new engine four, they're still getting acquainted with, with all the, you know, unique things to that, to that vehicle. So, we're almost done with that, I expect another week or two, we should be through with all of the potential drivers on that vehicle. Then we did some group, team-building scenarios, which required us to use and work as a team with several members to lifting air, using airbags and things like that, and different pneumatic equipment to simulate different scenarios that we may have to come across in the Mass Pike or something like that, where we have to lift up a tractor-trailer, or a portion of a tractor or something, if someone was entrapped in it or something, we use that, those types of equipment to, we have to be very careful about it. It's a really team effort, you can't move too quickly, you know, you have to stabilize all sides of it, as you, you know, you, we always, you know, we raise it an inch, we crib it an inch, so that it can't come back down, you know, we have to work together as a team to do that, so we, we did some team-building activities for that. In terms of our budget, I'm watching the FY twenty-four budget closely, as I always do. We're still down a full-time position due to injury, I expect that to last another month and a half or so. Hopefully, they're back to work sooner than later, but right now, we're, you know, we're, we're recurring some overtime expenses that, you know, I told the board and Jim about, so we're hoping to get through those, you know, maybe with, with no transfers, you know, necessary. I'm working very hard, you know, covering some shifts, you know, covering as many shifts as I can myself to, to get through that, so we're doing everything we can, but they do, you know, we also have three members that are in the fire academy right now, so that's put us down some staff, too, so. So, we're working our way through, through those things, you know, our ambulance billing line item is, is a little bit low, that's one I brought up in my reports before, that's based on the call volume and how many calls they bill out, so there's just a couple of line items that I'm watching, nothing crazy, but I will certainly keep the board in the loop if those, you know, require some sort of a line item transfer or a reserve account transfer coming down the, coming down the road, and I know I've talked to Madeline, the finance committee, on a couple of those, so they understand the situation. We also had to have that water heater replaced at a pretty decent cost, most of the way, or, you know, three-quarters of the way through the budget, too, so, you know, that doesn't help for, for those things. So, we're just working our way through those, but, you know, things are looking okay, and I'm just monitoring closely, so.
Very good, thank you very much, chief.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Do you have any questions?
No, sir, just thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you guys do, thank you. All right, so moving back to the special town meeting, ESTMs, and we were on.
Six.
Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer from precash the sum of two thousand five hundred to the ambulance billing line, to cover ambulance billing fees through the end of FY two thousand twenty-four, or take any action relative there, too. You guys have any questions?
No.
No, sir.
Okay. Well, there's that one.
I will also say, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The special town meeting, we're gonna send out an email to all departments, again, reminding them if they have any, any type of line item requests in terms of a transfer, line item transfers within their department, we're gonna send out another email. Get it to us now, because we can take care of this at the special in, in anticipation of, you know, not having to go to the FinCom for a line item transfer request. We can take care of the housekeeping, if, if, if it can wait till June thirteenth, we can take care of it at that, at the special.
Okay. All right, and with these, because these can get pretty lengthy, for this particular warrant, we'll just go through them, and I'm not gonna read them all through, I'm just gonna give the gist of what it is. The first one is for the town offices, committees, and take any relative action, too. It's just a standard one that's always there. Next one is to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to fill any positions that weren't voted on during the ballot. People don't vote for somebody, and there's not enough to get elected, and there's an empty position, it authorizes the selectmen to appoint somebody in that position for, to fill it till the next election. Three, that's for a full-time firefighter, and as you see from the fire chief, we're desperately in need of personnel. The fire chief is working a lot of hours to, to cover shifts on his own, and we only got a few people, and unfortunately, the volunteering of these things is getting harder and harder. So, when people see that there's additional positions that we didn't have before, it's because the state has changed the laws and kinda forced us into situations where we need to have hire people for these positions, and it's also getting harder and harder, because people are not volunteering to fill these positions. But we still have to maintain them to either remain public safety, or whatever it is, whatever particular job they're doing, so it's getting harder and harder to fill. If people don't volunteer and help out, or the state passes laws that make doing that not, not applicable anymore, then we gotta fill the position, because we still gotta take care of the town. So, you know, Article four, well, Article three is to hire a full-time police officer for two thousand twenty-five, and that's at forty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-six cents.
That's for.
That's a firefighter.
That's for the fire, that's for the firefighter, firefighter EMT. That's a firefighter EMT position. So, that, that's for that. Article four is for a full-time police officer, same situation, the part-time guys are going away, so we don't have all those volunteers anymore, we still have to man the shifts, and it's getting harder and harder to do, and it's actually costing us more in overtime than to just hire somebody, because you gotta fill those positions. So, that's for a full-time police officer at fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents for two thousand twenty-five. Next thing is to create a position for an alternate building inspector, and that's when we have situations where the building inspector is not around, there's a fill-in person to help out, and that is for a thousand-dollar compensation per year. And we can't expect some of these town, well, these people to work all the time. They do take vacations, but work still needs to be getting done, or if they're sick, or injured, or something, we need to have somebody that can fill in for them to still keep the town running, so that is what that is for. Do you guys have any objections with any of these yet?
No.
Do you have any questions, or? If you have any questions, because I'm just gonna go through them, if not, we're gonna be here all night.
Just Article five, was that, that was recommended by our, by our new building inspector?
Yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
And it would just be somebody from another town?
Oh, right.
That would fill in?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it'd be another building inspector somewhere else, and he would just come in, or she would come in, and fill in while, you know, our, our building inspector is out.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So.
So, he's gonna be in charge of that, or you're gonna be in charge of when he's not here? Let's say we approve, this gets approved, and now, let's say, I'm the building inspector, so I'm gonna be on vacation next week, I have to call one of these other guys and cover for me, or.
Well, he, he'd arrange it, if he can, and say, hey, I'm, I'm gonna be out, can you cover for me for this week, and.
Notify me.
Notify, yeah.
Notify the board.
Yeah, but obviously, if he's incapacitated and he can't notify anybody, then Mr. Farrar would be like, hey, can one of you other towns fill in?
Yeah, so, maybe a small plan later in the future to see, to have a list of possible candidates, so it's easy just to call them in.
Yep.
Well, fortunately, there's not many building inspectors within the communities, that's why it's so hard to fill in, and, you know, it's kinda one of those jobs, but. So, there's not many names out there to call, but we can do that, too. I'm sure he has some people that.
His contacts.
His contacts, so. But, yep, do you guys have any questions about any of those yet?
Nope.
Okay, next thing, that is all you, I have to, you can use myself on that.
Oh, just creating, it's the same thing as five, creating a position of alternate animal control officer, compensation of a thousand dollars.
Same thing.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah. Back to you.
Okay. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to create a new part-time position for Parks and Recreation, administrative assistant, recreational coordinator under grade one on the town's wage compensation scale, to raise and appropriate fourteen thousand three hundred and six dollars for compensation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, or take any action relative there, too. Again, Parks is an all-volunteer thing, and they need somebody to help out. They're like one of the only departments doesn't, doesn't have a full-time person working for them, so. You know, that's what they're asking for, you guys, any questions about that?
No.
No.
Okay. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow from their money and salary compensation to elected officers of the town as Mass General. So, what is this one exactly?
That's a standard article, that's always on.
It's always on there.
Yeah.
So, that's standard, okay. Number fifteen, to see if the town will vote from, to fund, will fund from precash the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to conduct a certain classification and compensation study on all.
Where are you?
Where are you?
You skipped a page. I skipped the whole, I don't have mine.
Why do you don't have any? Is it in the wrong order?
It goes from. Yeah.
Just don't read it all.
I don't even have a knife. All right, so nine. I was wondering, I'm like, wow, we went through that quick. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer available funds, the sum of.
Oh, this is just the sewer.
Yeah, it's for the sewer department. That's nine hundred and three thousand and fifty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents to finance the operations, commission salaries, and debt services in sewer enterprise fund. So, that's for the sewer.
So, there's a couple pieces to that, that article, that I, I just wanna draw to the board's attention. Number one, historically, since it's been in, you know, for the last maybe five to ten years, they've used their retained, a part of their retained earnings to use, to offset their operational costs. So, a couple things are gonna have to happen, you know, number one, the sewer commissioners are gonna have to make a determination as to what are the new rates are gonna be for fiscal year twenty-five, and then to see what they've been averaging for collection, you know, off of, off of, say, the last three years for collections. And so that they can come up with a determination as to how much potentially they would need to use for their retained earnings to balance, you know, their budget. So, that will have to be done within the motion, but that is some of the behind-the-scenes work that we're going to have to look at to, you know, close out and finish this article. So, we know it's gonna cost us nine hundred and three thousand dollars to operate the facility. Last year, I think it was somewhere around eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to operate the facility, so prices, you know, everything has gone up, you know, and it's, you know, there's quite a bit of expenses with chemicals, as, as well as salaries, and as well as, you know, you know, benefits and, and everything that has to be paid out. So, that, that is some of the behind-the-scenes work that is working with the sewer commissioners to, to make that determination.
You have any questions?
No.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrar. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to purchase from precash the sum of sixteen thousand for the purchase of four sets of turnout gear, helmets, boots, and items. This is for the fire department, again, it's equipment that they need. Good.
Yeah.
Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to purcha, purchase from precash the sum of fourteen thousand to upgrade the exhaust removal system and app, and all apparatus, take any, any action relative there, too, for the fire department. You guys good?
Yeah.
Sir.
Article twelve, to see if the town will adopt Mass General law, chapter forty-one, section one eleven M and one eleven N for the insurance purposes for all EMTs, and relative action there, too. Chief, do you wanna explain that one?
Sure. As mentioned earlier, myself, Chief Mallett, and, and, and our town administrator attended the Maya Injured on Duty seminar yesterday, and one of the conversations, we had met with them once before for, you know, just to make sure that, you know, we knew the correct procedures for anybody that's injured and not, and some other conversations came, had come up at that time, and one of those conversations, and it continued yesterday into the seminar, is that EMTs, specifically EMTs, are not covered the same way that firefighters are for injuries on duty. And what that means is that if I have a firefighter EMT, and they serve both roles, and they were injured or struck by a car at a car accident or something like that, they are covered a hundred percent on injured-on-duty status. However, if I, under Massachusetts law, if there is not this chapter specifically adopted by a municipality, if it's just an EMT, and they're not a firefighter, and they're an on-call EMT, and they're struck at the same incident by a vehicle, they are covered under workers' compensation at sixty percent, so.
So, theoretically, you had, have a firefighter that's an EMT, standing next to an EMT, they're both hit by the same car, same site, one gets a hundred percent, one gets sixty percent.
That's a hundred percent correct, so, and, and I don't feel that that's fair, and I don't think it's, it's, I think it, it leaves the town, certainly our employees most, you know, first and foremost, vulnerable to, to something. We don't have a lot of people, we have a very small handful of people that are just EMTs. Most of them are firefighters as well, but there are some people that don't wanna do the fireside, you know, and there's some people that don't wanna do the EMT sides, we have a mix of both, but we do have a few members that are just EMTs, and I'm trying to close this loophole here that we've discovered to make sure that they're protected the same as all the other staff on, on, in case they are injured on duty, and this is something. And this is something that came up in the seminar yesterday, and I think it's, it's one of those things that there's a lot of verbiage that a lot of people don't see and don't know about, and there were several other communities that went, oh, you know, and, uh, you know, some of the traffic constable stuff we, we, we recently dealt with. There was many communities a lot bigger than Warren that are now exploring that option and going down that road that had no idea that it was a workman's comp thing versus an IOD thing and everything. So a lot of these things are kind of hidden in the weeds and unless you really investigate them, you don't realize they're there. So this is one of those that we're looking to close that loophole and make sure that our EMTs and all of our staff are covered correctly and a hundred percent covered if they're injured on duty while responding to calls.
Do you have any questions?
No, seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah, this even will help as an incentive to get more EMTs.
Yeah, hopefully it will. I mean, like I said, it's, it, it, to me, it's splitting hairs. I don't see the difference between the two, the two jobs. It's emergency work. Uh, nothing we do here is, is non-emergency in the sense that it's, we can't, we don't pre-schedule things. I mean, you know, we don't do non-emergency transports. Everything we do is, comes through the nine-one-one system, so they're doing nine-one-one calls. It may not be a truly emergent call at the time, but it's still going through the nine-one-one system. So, you know, so they're coming from home, they're doing, they're on the schedule, you know, volunteering their time and, you know, if they get struck or hurt and they can't return to work, it's not fair that one gets sixty percent and the other gets a hundred percent coverage.
Completely agree.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
For explaining. Good?
I'm good.
All right. Um, Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote, um, any excess portion of any state aid for the regional school transportation to be reduced to, by Warren's pro-rata share of school transportation allocated to the district in excess of six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars or take any action relative there to. Do you have any guys? Good?
Yes, fine.
Good.
I, what is that for? Do you have my?
Are we just good? What?
Yeah, it's basically, well.
You give money back.
So, um, the, um, the, um, the budget for the school department, um, you know, they're budgeting that school transportation, um, costs um, are gonna be about six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars for the town. And then anything, if the state reimburses us greater than that, then we would get that portion back.
Yeah.
So if the reimbursement rate went up, goes up from, you know, eighty-five percent to ninety-two percent, you know, that seven percent difference, we would get that portion back.
Got it.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. You explained it well, much better than I could. All right. Um, Article four is basically a bylaw change and what that is, is changing the thirty thousand for the Cable Advisory Committee to fifty thousand, which is already their funding. Um, but it just changes it in the amount that we would have to authorize.
And it authorizes all the rest of the revolvers.
Yeah. Okay. You guys good with that?
Yeah. Can I have my nine back?
Yes, you can have your nine back. I'll get my nine from Mrs. Dusty someday. Okay, now we're on to fifteen, to see if the town will fund from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand to conduct a classification compensation study on all its employees and for the purpose of creating a new three-year wage compensation scale or take any action relative there to. Uh, this is a higher, uh, outside agency to come in and review all the employees' positions and classifications and identify what they should be getting paid at, uh, whether it's higher or less or what it is for the next three years because the compensation scale can only be done for up to three years because that's all that we're allowed to do, um, by the bylaw. And this would, it, since it's gonna be coming up next year, this would do that study instead of us trying to wing it and figure out where it is because that's what we've been doing for years. And this would actually put us on a good path of where we should be. Um, this company has done mu- many studies for many communities and they would actually look at if our pay scale is actually appropriate. Um, because we could probably do it better in a different way, so they might make a recommendation, well, your pay scale is a little complicated, you might wanna do this to make it a little better for the town. But that's what that would be for. You guys have any questions?
No.
You had something, Mrs. Dusty?
Yeah, that needs to be Board of Selectmen because the town administrator can't put forth any motions.
I put articles on before.
Yeah, but you couldn't, when we went to do that, you couldn't do it because you're not a registered voter. Remember this last time? We had a cross off his and you guys had to divide it up.
I can't make the motion, but I could put the article.
Right, you could put the article up, unto you.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can't do the motion.
Right, yeah.
Well, no, that's not right because the chief made motions for the police department.
I, yeah.
All I know is when we were in our pre-meeting, he could not.
I know that came up, but I forgot what. I know we were busy, there was some, but you've done it before.
Yeah.
And the chief does his.
Yeah.
So for, for the police department.
Yeah, I don't remember why.
We have to recognize them.
Yeah.
But we did, to speak, but I.
I know last year I had articles on under, under.
We'll find out.
Yeah, I passed the mic. Didn't Jeff Lake bring up something?
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought Jeff's mentioned something. He had the opine on that one.
I shouldn't do the, I shouldn't make the motion.
Right. Okay. Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Well, speaking on the article, I think it's a good thing because it takes from the Board of Selectmen that, you know, thing like, who are we to decide how much they make?
Right.
So it's a, it's a very positive thing.
Yeah, it's there.
I think too that then when they do this valuation, they're gonna work out more in wealth than everything together. That it's not gonna be like Barry or Munson or whatever.
They're not gonna compare us to Wellesley and stuff where they could pay a lot more.
And I think, and I think that's a good, you know, that's what's good of, of having it done outside.
It's completely independent third parties.
And it's just for Warren, yes.
Yep. What?
Nothing.
All right, um, so, okay, moving on. Sixteen, to see if the town will transfer from free cash the sum of twenty-five thousand into the OPEB Fund, um, other post-employment benefits or take any action relative there to. And this is because it's a recommendation from.
Department of Revenue.
DOR.
Reducing our liability.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, and we've been working on that, trying to get that.
We did, we did our first deposit last year.
Yep. So, and this helps us as far as, how's it benefit the town?
So, uh, uh, essentially what will happen is, is that, you know, as we continue to make deposits and then if the town was to go out to borrow money for a capital project, um, this will show that we have some good financial stewardship and that we are looking to, uh, decrease the liability, uh, as much as we can.
It's like having a good credit score.
Yeah, helps our credit score.
Sure.
Good? Nice. Very good, thank you. Um, next thing, Article, Article seventeen. Um, basically, this is about the town administrator and this, uh, codifies his position within the town. Um, we created his position, the town voted on it, but it's not in the bylaw. Um, basically codifying the position. So Article seventeen basically puts that in there, saying that we have a town administrator within the town and what his responsibilities are in the bylaw. Correct?
Correct.
You guys good with that?
Yeah, very good.
Okay. Um, Article eighteen, to see if the town will accept accounts in trusts, the income of which uh, is to be expended in, for perpetual care, maintenance of burial lots at Pine Gro- Pine Grove Cemetery for certain individuals for the nineteen oh-nine plan in said cemetery or take any action relative there to. This is a, a reoccurring article.
Yeah.
Um, this happens every year. Um, so that, that's one of the standards that we have on each year that we have to do. And it's basically like a bookkeeping cut type thing. Okay, Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer to, treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements during fiscal year two thousand twenty-five as permitted by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F or ta- take any action relative there to. Another kind of bookkeeping, um, article. And that is it, that we have so far.
Right.
Um, and there'll probably be some added as we go along and we'll finalize as we go, but that gives everybody the basic understanding of what's being proposed so far for bylaws. Okay, did you have anything?
Sure, I'll just follow up by saying there are some, there were some other articles that are proposed by departments that capital planning is looking at and capital planning is, is, is finalizing their review of those articles. Um, and they will be, you know, put on, you know, a- as soon as we've, you know, capital planning has finished their work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Good.
I'm good.
Okay, moving on.
Before we go to the next one. The reason that I'm here tonight has to do with your budget.
No, boy.
Okay. Um. Madeline Witazek.
Yeah.
Assistant Town Accountant, Chairman of, uh, the Finance Committee.
Well, is this about our budget? Our, our budget?
Your budget.
Because we're gonna get on to that on number eleven.
Oh, I didn't see, I didn't know, I.
Yeah, number eleven, we're gonna be talking about the selectmen's budget.
Okay, I didn't know, I don't have a copy of the agenda, so.
Oh, okay, sorry.
That's all right, I'll wait.
No, I, I didn't know if you had something pertaining to the articles on that and I'm like, oh.
We, we're still talk, we haven't voted on all of them yet in FinCon, but.
Right, yeah, no, that, we just gave a gist of what it was that town, you know, people are proposing.
We, I mean, we've had those, but we, we didn't go through them all yet.
Okay, all right.
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on. Um, we are on number eight, discussion on possibly entering into an agreement with Verizon One Talk for providing new phone services for all departments and using a portion of unspent American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover, uh, implementation costs, anticipated vote. Um, and even today, we're having problems with our phone system. Um, line one on our phone system, if you call the town phones right now, you will get a high-pitched squeal in the phone.
Hum.
A hum. Um, but it's very loud and irritating. If you hang up and call right back, it will go on to line two and you'll be able to get to the town and talk, but right now we're having problems with our phone system. Again, we've been looking at this because it is getting to be a problem. We can't buy new phones, we can't replace new phones. Um, we can buy some on Amazon from certain vendors that refurbish the old phones, but there's no guarantee and it will, the whole system itself is having problems. So we looked at this One Talk, um, which is a redundant system. Um, so it is a type of phone that uses internet, like a VoIP phone, but this has the benefit where if we lose the internet, it goes to cellular. So we don't lose the phone service. Um, we can still make calls, receive calls because when it detects that it's no longer using the, uh, the online or the, the internet, then we can use the cellular part, which is no extra cost of the phone or anything. It's just, it's a redundant system to make sure the calls go through. Um, it also has a lot more options and then it gives us the opportunity to trade out phones, it gets phone serviced as needed. And there's no hard equipment that's here anymore, unlike the current hard, hard cop- copper lines which we have, um, which Verizon and A and T has already put us on notice that they will probably not be servicing copper lines anymore in the future because they're kind of going away. Um, and so they're going to these more internet phones and cellular type things. Um, because the copper lines are very expensive to maintain throughout communities. Um, but they are a good phone, they work really well, the department's had chances to talk with them and use them. And it comes right in line where our phone system is failing us now. And we can't get these things in quick enough, I don't think. So as soon as we can get them in, June first.
I'm sorry, what's? The, 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 the soonest we can get them in, um, well, um, you know, it's gonna take some time to do the mapping, um, map it out, um, and to go through all our, our phone numbers. Um, it, it's gonna take some time to identify, make sure everything's ported over, um, and then order the equipment. It takes two to three weeks for the equipment to come in. Um, you know, it, there's a possibility that maybe we could get it before July first, um, you know.
July or June?
Um, well, there's a possibility that we could do it in June, there's a possibility.
Tomorrow? After screen week? Can't make a phone call now, man, tomorrow?
Uh, I mean, this is a, this is a, I, I.
It's a major project.
It's a major project. And, 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 you know, we wanna make sure that it's done correctly.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the mapping, the making sure that, you know, we're gonna be going from now, you know, where you call the highway department or police department, uh, you dial their numbers directly, now it's gonna be all extensions. We gotta work, you know, make sure everything's done correctly. Um, you know, I, I really wanna make sure that it, it's, uh, it's, it's done right the first time, um, as best we can. Um, so we don't have to go over it or, or change anything. I mean, we have a smooth transition. Um, I'd like to see it done by June. I, I, I can't guarantee it. Um, you know, I, I think July first, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to push it as fast as we can.
I don't know how long our phone system's gonna hold on for, so. Having issues.
Yeah, I mean, now's.
But this is a great system. We looked at a lot of different systems and we looked at the VoIP system, which is purely internet system. And we know that has a lot of failures and a lot of issues with it. Uh, we looked at using, you know, getting more copper, you know, the regular, uh, type of phones in here and nobody really supports that anymore. And we'd have to upgrade our whole system at a very expensive cost, um, to do that. And again, they might not be supported in the future, so we'd make a big investment in something that phone companies just won't support later on.
And you would still have to pay for all those telephone numbers, those individual numbers. So there's no, um, there's no accessibility of having it just dial by extensions, you know. You're still gonna have to dial out, um, to, you know, have all of those, you know, individual departments that are not within the building.
This system also does, um, it does all the voicemail and everything. Your voicemail box is set up, set up. So it makes it, and that puts it out on the cloud, so you can actually pull them at any point. And it also sends an email to the department or the employee that there was a email or voicemail message and what it was, so. Um, you know, it also does the call forwarding, so if you're trying to call somebody and say, you know, Mr. Farrar is out on the road doing something and you're trying to get ahold of him, it would forward right to his voice, uh, to his cellphone. He could set it up that it does that and he would still get the call even when he's not in the office. Um, so there's a lot more accessibility, um, to the departments. And we're, it's easily a change too, so if we have to fix anything, if an employee leaves, we can fix it virtually within minutes. Um, set up a new voicemail for them, so, for, for a new employee.
So, sorry, did you say we'd get rid of the other numbers, like five, seven, oh, two and nine?
Well, no, they would, they would port those numbers over, so we'd, we'd still use those same numbers.
Still use them, okay.
Um, you know, um, and those numbers would be ported over. It's just now, it's just gonna have to be identifying what, how those numbers circulate, how the flow goes. Um, you know, what extensions, um, you know, we're gonna have to, um, work with Masters and Verizon folks to engineer that all out.
And instead of calling a department, you don't have to dial the whole number, you could just dial the extension of the department. So if you need to call the chief, you just dial beep, 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 and you got the chief.
From here.
And then if he doesn't answer, it goes to his cellphone and then it sells him, sends him emails and then it sends somebody over to his house to knock on his door and tell him we need him. So he can't get away.
How much capital money are we gonna use?
So, I mean, I, I, I would propose that we would use, you know, somewhere around to, to get the initial cost of fifty-two hundred dollars.
Did you, did you put that in?
It's right here, it's in the, the, you know, the quote here, five thousand, one hundred and four dollars and sixty-eight cents. So there's a, there's some projects that, that haven't used all of the funds, and if we, um,
So this number would be.
If we, if we, if we could, um, um, you know, scrub the ARPA funds. Yeah, yeah, there's some fund, there's some account, there, there was one, one project that didn't use all of its funds. Um, and there's, there's a money available.
Okay, very good. So you guys have any more questions?
No, I think we've hashed this out.
Yeah?
We gotta do it.
Go for it.
And it's a good product, I think, you know.
Yeah, this is actually really impressive.
It's like going to the store and, and buy CDs to, to listen to music right now. Nobody does that anymore. We have to update.
Gotta update this, especially when we're losing lines.
Yeah.
Alright.
Motion? I'll make a motion to enter into an agreement with Verizon One Talk and to use a portion of the internet, um, portion of the unspent American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover the implementation costs.
Second. All in favor?
Rich, aye, hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Alright, get us our phones.
Okay, I'll get on it.
Before we lose line two.
Yeah.
Then we'll be completely without anything. Alright, next thing on the agenda is nine, acceptance and signing of the town clerk warrant for the May seventh town elections, anticipated vote. So we got the warrant for the annual town election. And this is for selectmen, board of health, assessor, assessor, park commissioner, cemetery commissioner, sewer commissioner, planning board, housing authority, um, housing authority, and tree warden. And then the school would be providing their positions on the warrant for two members from the town of Warren, and two members for the town of Westbrook Field. Okay, do you guys have any questions?
No.
And this, this is for the election for, um, Tuesday, the seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-four, from eight AM to eight PM. And the polling place will be for A and B is the Shepherd Municipal Building at forty-eight High Street, High Street in Warren. So just remember, if people are gonna vote, all the voting is here at the Shepherd Municipal Building. Um, we're no longer doing voting over at the senior center, so both A and B is here at the, um, Shepherd Building, okay?
Motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept and sign the warrant for the annual town election for May seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Richard Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Your signature get longer. Who's getting shorter? You're trying to draw it back out again?
Yeah.
Nine is longer.
And then Derek is like, clearing, clearing, and just, yeah. All his little dots around it. Oh, you did add more dots, you get six dots now.
Yeah.
Same dots.
One of those is an eclipse.
Eclipse dot?
It depends if it was before the eclipse or after the eclipse.
Alright, uh, next thing on the agenda is number ten, Earth Day Cleanup, and that is April twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. And that's to meet at the Warren Community Elementary School and Park and Lot, and that is for eight forty-five AM. And that is a Saturday, and I hope everybody, do we have a lot of people signed up yet?
Um, I'm not sure, but I, I do know that, um, a lot of people have expressed interest in it.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that the trial court will be on hand. Um, they are also gonna be providing us with some nifty nabbers, trash sticks for, you know, those nabbers there, um, uh, for picking up trash, uh, we've got, uh, over two hundred yellow bags from Mass DOT, thank you, Mass DOT.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I think we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna have a good, uh, good kickoff for the first year.
Is it gonna rain that day, Jimmy?
I hope not, but if it is, it's, the rain date's the next, uh, next day.
No, I don't wanna be bad, but I hope it rains.
No.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna be there this time.
Why? I'm going away. Oh my God. Well, we'll have you do it on the rain date.
Okay.
We'll give you a couple trash bags sitting out there.
And you can wear, and the others you can use for trash.
Well, I'll be there, you're gonna be there?
I'll bring pizza.
I think so.
You just keep your knapper thing away from me. Alright, and then, um, Mr. Duff, do you have anything on the school for that? Because we're meeting at the school.
I'll, I'll discuss it after.
Where, where do we want to be?
Um, I know that you just said that the trial court was gonna be there, Jim, um, could you further elaborate on that?
So they're, they're gonna have, uh, people picking up trash in the center of town?
When you say people, is it?
Prisoners?
Is it people that wouldn't pass a quarry?
Uh, there's a possibility, there's a possibility.
I can't meet at the town.
I can't have my students participate in an event, potentially. I'll have to discuss that a little bit further if I have people who can't pass a quarry, we don't allow them into the building as it is. Um, so I have an opportunity.
No, they, they would come directly to the center of town, so they wouldn't meet at the school. Um, so they would, they would be controlled and supervised, uh, by people that are, you know, travel.
By the sheriff's department.
I think this will mirror further discussion, but it's not the time or place for that right now.
Right, um, but other people, other than them? Meeting at the school, anywhere you want in the park?
Wherever's available, I don't know.
Whatever's available.
We were thinking the front circle by the flagpole.
Okay.
That's what we're gonna have.
Because we're probably gonna just drive.
Yeah.
From there to wherever we're gonna go.
The meeting point there.
Yeah.
And then the trash we brought back there and put on trailers.
Uh, are the people bringing the trash there, or are we just leaving it on the road?
Uh, if we leave all the trash, it's gonna come to our trailers, the school.
So people gotta put it in their cars and bring it there?
Uh, you're gonna have a pickup truck, right, Jimmy?
Uh, yes.
So you're gonna pick up all the trash on the roads and bring it to wherever you're gonna be? We're not, we're not having people load it in their cars and bringing it there to the school?
There's pickup trucks too available for volunteers that will take care of that.
Okay, alright, yeah, we just gotta figure that stuff out, make sure that, you know, because, you know, somebody that wants to participate, they might not wanna put a trash bag full of town trash in the back of their car.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make arrangements to get it.
Okay.
So maybe if we just have like, you know, say, for example, I know this started when, when I made the suggestion, just doing the business district. So if you just leave the, the trash bags all in the, you know, center of town, and then somebody can come by and pick them up and take them to the dump.
Like, say if a street was cleaned, maybe at the, in an intersection, leave a few bags, and then make a note, and someone will come to come up.
Right, very good. We'll figure it out, we'll get it done. And it's gonna be a great opportunity for everybody to clean up their town, and, you know. I, I noticed some areas are pretty bad, but there's also, a lot of people have been doing their duty and cleaning up around their properties and making it look good, making Warren look beautiful. Um, and it's a hard time of year, too, so, but get out there if you can and clean up in front of your house. Um, next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote, um, on the Selectmen FY twenty-five budget, anticipated vote. And Madeline's, Madeline's been waiting for this one, she wants to yell at us for some reason.
No, I don't want to yell at you, I just want to clear the air on a couple of things that were done.
Okay, so what, what do you have?
Okay.
Before we get into, so we can know what, what we're dealing with before we dig into it.
I'll say it again, Madeline Witazek, Assistant Town Accountant, Finance Committee Chair. It was, it was, um, questioned on your budget. The question happened to be for the regional dispatch. Then also, there was also a question on the copier lease amount. And this information, I did not, as the town accountant, supply that information. So the budget that you have in front of you that you're working on.
Yeah.
Is not what the finance committee gave you, okay? David's writing and he's not paying attention.
No, I'm highlighting both those areas, so I know which ones they are.
Right, so anyways, the question was raised, what happened to the one twenty-nine, seven forty-one, okay? That, that sheet there is not what I, as a FinCom chair, gave you. So the sheets that I just gave you now, okay, the first page was last year's budget that was filled out. This was from the FinCom book, okay?
You're talking about the regional dispatch for it?
Right, the next page, the second page I just gave you.
Yeah.
That's what I gave, the FinCom gave to you. I did not give you this sheet that has all these percentages. That's not what I, where this came from, I don't know.
My computer.
Yeah, that's something we, we.
Correct, I understand, but.
It's not correct, though.
But it's not correct, and it was said that the information came from the town accountant on the regional dispatch. I'm not sure if she got this from a report or where she got the information. So my point is, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, I'm just saying that your budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-four proposed is incorrect, it should be what I just gave you. And I also gave you a copy of the last page is what was certified for the town meeting. So if you look at what's certified at town meeting on this sheet that you have with the percentages should be four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, that's all I'm saying.
Wait, shouldn't this be FY twenty-four approved budget?
Right, it, right.
On both of these, right?
No, this, this one here, the first page, that's proposed, this is from the FinCom book. This is what we voted on at town meeting, the first page.
So on ours, though, it should be FY twenty-four approved budget then?
The next, the second page, one, yes, the second page, not that page, the second page. That's what I gave you. The second page is when I, and when I.
Okay, but on ours, it should be, on this here, it should be approved, not proposed.
I, that, that's not my sheet, so that's all I'm saying.
Right.
So I, I'm just saying that if there was a question that arose on, um, amounts, you know what I'm saying? Um, you know, I'm here, so if there was a question, I thought it could've been brought to my attention.
So only Selectmen A is messed up, what about B and C?
No, those are fine.
So you're, you're only questioning the copier lease amount?
I, well, you questioned it.
The regional agreement.
You questioned why this amount changed from the one twenty-nine, seven forty-one, which was last year's budget. And then the question was on the thirteen-five for the copier, what got.
Right.
It should've been was fourteen thousand dollars. So I just wanted to straighten out.
I think we went back and forth, and when we looked at it, it was, it is thirteen-five, right?
No, this is, this is what was voted at town meeting, fourteen thousand.
For two thousand twenty-four.
Correct, but if you look on this sheet either.
What our proposed one is thirteen-five, right, because that's what it is?
That was last year's.
No, they approved, should be fourteen thousand of twenty-four.
Right, those two numbers are off.
Didn't we fix this, like, three, four meetings ago? Right?
I don't know what you have now, I'm just saying, I just want it brought to the attention.
Twenty-three was fifteen, so it was off by five hundred on the last year's budget.
And fifty thousand on the dispatch. And that had to do with the article, I, article.
Thousand.
Okay.
Well, then we lowered it, it, because it actually went down, because our proposed one is thirteen-five now from the fourteen dollars.
I'm not talking about this year's because I don't have your budget yet for this year. Okay, this is what you sent me, what you, you have gained, but you haven't voted on the final, so Jim's been filling us up, well, we're talking about this, we're talking about that, so we don't have your final budget, which I assume you're gonna maybe finalize tonight.
Okay, there's a discrepancy of twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Where's that?
Between what you just gave us and what's on our sheet. But I don't see where that is.
No, that's twenty twenty-two.
No, I'm looking at her total and our total.
Okay, which, what?
And they're off by twenty-four, five. Your total is four forty-three, our total is four sixty-seven, it's twenty-four, five.
Okay, I don't know where you're talking with this, this is what we voted on town meeting, four forty.
Madeline, I don't have a problem, I have an issue with the discrepancy between the two budgets.
It's an issue, I would just think that it would be.
So what are you talking about, where would you miscatch?
David.
Well, she's saying that our total should be four forty-three.
Yeah.
For twenty-four, but our total's four sixty-seven. So somewhere, there's twenty-four, five hundred discrepancy.
You'd have to check each one against each other. But David, all I wanted to say was that I think that it would just depend, you know, you could've maybe contacted the FinCom, especially since I'm in the building, that, um, okay?
So we, we got it now, and we'll fix that, we'll fix those numbers, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And, um, you know, I, I'm looking at like what we're gonna do now for our.
Well, I'm just saying that you, you, because you, when you wanna compare apples to apples, so you got these percentages there. That doesn't make, that's not giving you what you need to know when you get the wrong numbers.
No, I know what it is.
Okay.
It's five hundred dollars for copier lease, and then maintenance on town levy didn't exist in twenty-four.
Correct.
So that shouldn't even be there. Right, that's a new thing?
You're right.
Yeah, that was put on at the special.
But for twenty.
Yeah, it wasn't part of the, it wasn't a part of the, uh, the twenty-four approved budget.
Okay, so that needs to be gone, that should be zero. And there's your twenty-four, five.
For the maintenance for town levy.
Maintenance for town levy, and the copier lease is wrong.
Right, it, it should've been fourteen, but.
I know, which we talked about like many, many years ago.
No, we were talking about the fifteen, we, before, and then the actual copier lease was the thirteen-five, thirteen-five.
Okay.
But this, it should be fourteen hundred.
According to them, yes, but according to what the actual bill is, it's thirteen-five.
Yeah, but that's not what you put in here, you're putting the approved budget, not the amount of expenditures.
You're right.
So for whatever reason, we spent five hundred less, but it shouldn't be.
Yep, you're right.
So that gives us our discrepancy then.
But if you go to the next sheet, it's even off even more because of.
Which the next sheet is?
No, her next sheet. Because that's the approved, if you look at the bottom number of the approved, it's off.
It's up, they're the same, four forty-three, four seventy-four.
She was saying they were off because of the, the regional dispatch number and the fifty thousand that came out of it.
No, that's correct, one twenty-nine, seven forty-one.
Then I don't know what she was saying.
Alright, well, these two need to be corrected then.
I will correct them.
Alright, easy fix.
But it doesn't change our current numbers?
No.
It just changes the percentage.
Well, it changes the percentage, which means that we have a bigger increase.
Correct.
Than we are thinking. Right, because now we're gonna be.
And we know the regional dispatch for this year now is being.
One seventeen, three hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, one hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred. The positive buffer.
What's, I'm sorry.
The regional dispatch amount.
The regional dispatch is one seventeen, three hundred dollars, yeah.
And we know the copiers are going to be thirteen-five. And we know we're adding the town levy maintenance fund as usual now. Voted on approved to add now. And yet, we have to maintain it.
Selectman A is going up seven, a little over seven percent then.
But that's also because we added stuff.
You added maintenance on town buildings.
I know, but because this column was wrong.
Yeah.
It looked better than, yeah. So, then your big number at the end is probably maybe going to be more like ten percent, maybe more. Because it's going to be twenty, twenty-four or five. Yeah, because you want to discuss it.
We'll have to adjust the numbers, and, but we'll adjust those numbers, yeah. They were wrong, and we'll correct those because they were what the town approved and we voted on, and not what we actually spent.
So, it's like ten percent, ten point five.
And that, we also add building maintenance inside here too, so that was an adjustment, so. All right, so let's look at 2025 for our budget. So, everything we pretty much approved, the copier lease amount, we've worked on that. And we added the, the maintenance, the town maintenance expense because that was something that was recommended to do in the budget versus doing an article each time because we know it's going to be a recurring expense to take care of the buildings. So, we added it in the budget. What else did we have here that was an issue? The dispatch expense went down, and the copier expense went down by five hundred for 2025 to show what we're actually spending. And the levy expense for the, the town levies, that's going to be a constant because we've got to maintain the levy system. And there's a lot of maintenance that goes within that levy system because we own it. Was there anything else that you seen that you wanted to discuss, or?
Nope, I think pretty much we've gone through this, right?
Yeah, we beat it several times.
Yeah.
Do you have anything, sir?
Nope.
Did you have anything, Mr. Parker?
No.
All right, so let's just make sure we change those couple of numbers for fiscal year 2024.
Yep.
Which doesn't affect this year's budget that we're proposing, but we just want to make sure we account for the money that was there, so we get the proper percentages. And we have nothing else, everybody else is good with the numbers. The phone system, does that change in any way?
It's just going to be taken out of everybody's expense account, so all the department's expense account. However, they pay for their phones now, they'll continue to pay for them.
Okay.
FinCom didn't want to go back and cut everybody's expense account and then put it under a.
A general account?
A general account. It'll be broken off by departments, similar to what they have with the C2 Energy bill, and they'll just be, have to sign off and pay their expense.
Okay. If it'd be easier to maintain if it was all just one account.
Well, it will be, it will be just one bill, and it'll have, it'll have like, you know, fire department and then their total, what their, what their costs will. And it'll have police department, their total, their cost, it'll be one bill. So, you get one bill instead of having to worry about, you know, every department getting a bill.
I know, but if it was in the budget, it was just one budget line, um, phone service, you know? Warrant phone service, you know, community phone service.
Yeah.
It'd be easier if it was just one budget line versus every department having an account for it.
I mentioned it to the FinCom, and they didn't want to go back and cut the expense account of every department and then bring it under one line.
Right, okay. Did you have something else to do?
No, I'm just checking, double checking.
Do you agree with everything, no questions?
No, good.
I have no questions. Public have any questions about the budget? We beat this pretty much up and down. There's always one, yes, Steve.
So, one thing about the phones, is that something maybe an extra we'll look into?
What's that?
I would take it out of, you know, how you just said you have one bill?
Yeah, we, I mean, in the future, I mean, if, if, if they, if they want to do, if FinCom wants to go back and, and change, you know, everybody's expense line by the forty or fifty or sixty or seventy dollars they pay a month for their phone and take it out and then put it under one budget, then they will reduce everybody's expense account in the future. But this year, they just, they didn't have time to go back and cut everybody's expense back, you know?
I think once we get one year in there too, in them, and seeing what the phone bills realistically are, then we can make that deduction next year, just add them all up and put them under one line next year. The goal is to really kind of consolidate a lot of this stuff that's all over the place, just like the generator services and everything else, and just bring it under one thing. So, we don't have all these miscellaneous stuff all over the place. Simplify the budget, make it as simple as possible. We know we have a generator at the police department, the fire department, you know, senior center. We've got to maintain them, so. All right.
So, I would say table this until next week again? So, we get the total, we get it back corrected and?
Well, we can vote on it and make change, you know, with changes, many changes. Because all we're doing is 2024, we voted, we, our budget for 2025 is done. We got everything in there. You not missing anything?
The only thing we will have to talk about is the cleaning services, so we would have to, we will have to talk about, you know, Steve's contract. We would have to, you know, potentially, you know, not renew at least thirty days.
He wants a lot of money, right? Want more money?
No, he hasn't, he hasn't given us any increase. Just, we would have to let him know what the, you know, at least a thirty-day notice.
And how are we paying it for, out of facilities custodians? Is that where it's coming from, or?
Well, we transferred money from facilities custodian to the Shepherd Building. So, you know, we will not have money to, to pay for his services, you know, after, you know, starting July one. Actually, his services will probably, it would have to end the end of May. We have until coverage for him, and then we would have to go in for, you know, a line item transfer or a article at special town meeting if we want to continue, you know, for the end of June.
Well, we're not going to hold a special meeting just for that?
No, at the special, at the special, yeah, yeah.
But he wouldn't be getting paid until?
He would get paid at, at the end of the month, another June, yeah.
If it passes?
Yeah.
And I don't like people working or doing something like that, and then if it doesn't pass.
Oh, we couldn't, we couldn't continue the service until it passed, yeah.
All right, so what do you want to do? Want to vote for it now?
Well, can you send out copies when you fix it? I'd be okay with that. So, I'll make a motion to approve the Selectman's FY '25 budget as amended.
Second, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Denny Biddy's aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Yeah, there it is. All right. So, next thing is warrants and bills, anticipated vote. First thing is warrants.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number sixty-one payroll, fifty thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents. Number sixty-two vendor, hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred, forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Denny Biddy's aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills. Turley Publications, forty-six dollars. Modern Pest, hundred and eight dollars. Warren Water District, two hundred, five dollars, fifty-one cents. C2 MA Adams, twenty-one hundred, twenty-seven dollars, thirty-eight cents. Crystal Rock, twenty-one dollars, sixteen cents. American Tower, twenty-two hundred, eighty-two dollars and thirteen cents. Maya Property, five hundred, forty-nine dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Denny Biddy's aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April fourth, 2024.
Second, all in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Denny Biddy's aye.
David Dufray, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And town administrator report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have a brief meeting, I have a brief report to, to give the board this evening. This week was a very busy week. We had capital planning on Tuesday. We had met with regards to some of the capital requests that departments had put forward. As I had mentioned when we were talking about the, the articles for, for the annual and special town meeting, there are still some articles out there that capital planning are reviewing, and they're going to be making their determination on. And we'll be wrapping that up hopefully by next week with a meeting that we are finishing reviewing all of the articles. And there's some, some capital projects that are very important to the town that have been proposed by several various departments. Also, this week, I did notify Northeast IT to let them know that, you know, effective June thirtieth, we will be terminating services with them. And effective July first, moving with Entrez Technologies. And we've given them more than a sixty-day notice that is what is required under our contract. So, we were asking for a smooth transition and a seamless transition from Northeast IT to Entrez Technologies. We are in the process of doing that. There's still some behind-the-scenes work that I'm going to have to work with Entrez Technologies to ensure that we, that they have all the proper information that they need from us internally here as well as Northeast IT. As was alluded to in, in both chiefs' report, we attended a very important training yesterday in North Hampton sponsored by our insurance provider, Maya. It is on injured on-duty claims. Hopefully, we do not have to ever have to use that, but it is a necessity to know all of the, the laws and in governing all of the regulations around injured on-duty claims. And I was very pleased that both, both chiefs were very eager to attend and asked some really good questions by the presenters of Maya. We were able to interact with other fire chiefs and, and, and public safety professionals as well as some other town administrators were in attendance from other communities. We also received some Maya Rewards credits for that, and the training didn't cost us anything. So, that was a win-win for a few hours in the morning. We were able to do that and get that, learn about injured on-duty. And it's important, you know, when we had, back in January, I had asked Maya to come out and to kind of give a debriefing with our public safety professionals on, on, you know, the difference between injured on-duty and workman's comp. And that's where we discovered, you know, the 111 N and M and how important it is to protect our EMTs. And the town is currently not protected, you know, the EMTs is currently not protected in terms of their whole holistic approach of injured on-duty. So, we, 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 we looked into that, and Chief Lavoy was right on it with, you know, getting out there and saying that he needs to have the protection for his EMTs. You know, a workman's comp claim are, are, are significant, and, you know, they, they, you know, those cover sixty percent. Injured on-duty would be a hundred percent. And so, this is a very important for first responders. And that would require a local adoption of the statute. And so, many communities have done it. Some communities chose not to do it, but I think it was, like the chief had indicated, a real eye-opener for a lot of these communities, especially the smaller communities, that don't realize the impact of risk. And it's very important, and I know sometimes that I talk about risk at department head meetings, but it's not, it's not trying to be parochial. It's, it's about real-life scenarios and how risk is very important and to try to manage risk as much as you can because it can be very costly and very expensive for our town. And so, the training, I thought, went very well, and I think the chiefs got a lot of information to bring back to their departments. Also, this week, we are in the process of obviously going through all of the budgets and, and continuing on. FinCom is going to be meeting next week. Their, their final, you know, they've started the review of some of the articles. As you can see from, from your warrant list so far, some of them have already have the FinCom recommendations on them. As, as they give their stamp of approval on them, I will update the articles and give them to the board for their review as well. It doesn't appear that the annual town meeting or the special town meeting will be an onslaught of a lot of articles this year, you know? Typically, we've, we've had over thirty for the last couple of annual town meetings that I've been in attending. You know, we're hovering right around the twenty mark. So, I think, you know, we are going to send out that notice to all departments. If you have a, a line item request that you may be running short in a certain line, please get me a, get me the information. We can put it on the special so that we can alleviate having to conduct line item transfer meetings. Now, if they're necessary and, 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 you know, it's emergency, obviously, you know, FinCom will act on that. But they're trying to, to move towards the direction of getting these addressed at the special. So, with, with that and with the articles, you know, obviously, you know, working with the sewer department in, in, in coming up with their formula on how they're going to be addressing their operational needs and costs. You know, it's now part of the sewer's top-of-the-mind awareness that, you know, they have to look at, you know, their, their annual fees in which they charge their sewer fees. And so, you know, last year, they were able to split up the bills into biannual billing, one in the fall and one in the spring. I think that helped out for a lot of people that are on fixed income and, and can, can address it that, that way. So, we are working towards FY '25. It is a, a very busy time of the year for all of the departments. I'm really excited about, we have a new wastewater treatment mechanic operator starting on Tuesday, the Justin Peck, we took him around. He's going to be starting on Tuesday, he's cleared all his steps. We have a new assessor's clerk position, so the office will not be dark. We have, that office is going to be open. It's going to be staffed for, for residents to, any questions or concerns. We just ask that, you know, be, be patient in that, you know, we'll, we'll get those questions over to the board for their responses. We just ask that, you know, be patient and that, you know, we'll get those questions over to the board for their responses. So we're taking the necessary steps of trying to fill these positions as quickly and as expeditiously as possible to make sure that the town residents continue to have their services. But all of this takes time, so we haven't lost hindsight of that. And we're working on FY twenty-five budget in coordination with filling these vacancies. I know the chief has the vacancy for lieutenant's position, we've been getting some resumes in for that. We anticipate, you know, having some public interviews on that, that's a very serious, high-level position and going forward with that. You know, there's a lot of challenges in departments with staff and it's very tough with trying to, you know, attract and retain staff and, you know, hopefully this wage classification study and plan that comes out will look at all of those inequities that we could potentially have in our community and address some of those in ways we can improve upon and different things. I do also have reports that I'm going to be submitting by Tuesday to the state on a couple grants, on the One Stop for Growth Grant, on the Community Planning Grant. Those progress reports have to be in by Tuesday, I'm going to be submitting those and submitting for reimbursements on the grants for the town. And as well as looking, I've been also trying to put together a financial document that I would like to give the board either on a monthly or a quarterly basis as to where we are financially. And I'm working on putting that together, I'm trying to put all of the different departments together with revenue and expenses to see where we are, something simplified to track where we are with revenue, expenses. You know, there's, every department gets a monthly report from the town accountant where they are with revenue and expenditures. So I'm going to be putting together a, kind of like a, you know, like a, an overview of all the departments of where we are for that given period of time. And I'd like the Board of Selectmen to have that so they kind of know where we are financially. And I've been working on that so that we can get that out to the board and they know where we are financially. We have, obviously, the One Talk folks, it's great, we got it passed tonight. There's going to be a period of transition there and then there's going to be a period of, you know, implementation as well as getting them the stuff, whiteboarding all of the stuff, making sure it's mapped out. You know, all of this will take some significant time, I'm going to have, we're going to have to work with every department and sit down and kind of go over their strategy and make sure that they understand, you know, what we need and make sure we account for all of the numbers and everything. And it's going to take some time, but I think we're going to be very successful at that. I have also been in contact with Chris Collins from our energy provider for energy conservation experts for our Green Communities Grant. I'm looking at two projects right now, the weatherization at both the senior center and the Shepherd Building. That would be a complete building wrap as well as heat pumps at the senior center. So the senior center, as the board knows, we have had issues with the heating unit there. The heating unit is a nineteen ninety-seven unit, it's about twenty-nine, twenty-eight years old in age. And it doesn't get to its maximum potential in very cold weather scenarios. So it's only firing at about seventy percent efficiency and it's probably seen its useful life. So if we were as successful with getting the grant and moving in a direction of a heating pump, these heating pumps would be a hybrid model that is currently allowed under the Green Communities Grant. A hybrid model would allow for heat pumps as well as a portion of gas, okay? So you would still have some natural gas and heat pumps to operate your HVAC units at the senior center. So we would have a hybrid approach primarily if the temperature got below thirty-five degrees outside, the, you know, you could have it potentially set at, you know, have the natural gas kick in. Because sometimes at the lower temperature thresholds, heating pumps are working at its full capacity and sometimes would need an extra boost. That's why they take the hybrid model from going at it with natural gas and electricity. So if we were able to do that and get all of that done, we could potentially have a brand-new HVAC unit at the senior center at zero cost. So we're working on that, I'm working on the grant with the Green Communities. I have a call tomorrow with Green Communities, with Northeast, not Northeast, National Grid and with our energy consultant on that in trying to map all this together to see if we can put this together, have it go in the bit, have it go out for the grant and to see if it makes sense with all these efficiencies in there. If we are able to get all of these, we may have a little bit of additional money, and I've already talked to Jeremy about this, about addressing some weatherization at the highway garage and he's all for it so that we could potentially, you know, do some of that, at least the office and maybe some of the kitchen area into weatherization wrap. Again, to try to keep the energy inside and save on some weatherization over there. So we're looking at those projects, we're going about them methodically to try to get them addressed through grants. And that's what we've been working on this week.
Well, the good thing about the heat pumps is they'll go on the roof, right?
No, so what will happen is that the heat pumps, because we have a unit off to the side now, I asked this, they will take that unit off to the side.
Get rid of it.
Get rid of it. And they will, there's an extender that they can put towards the roof and it will stay on to the side. Because I also talked to them, if they were to go on to the roof, I said, well, we were looking at potentially doing a roof over there in the future, you know, how would that all work out? He said, no, this would go off to the side as a side unit, but it would have an extender over. It would be mirroring our current system.
But hopefully, it's going to be a lot quieter for the neighbor.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And solve that problem too.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's getting towards, it's spring and summer's coming.
Correct.
That AC is going to be kicking on soon and we're going to be getting those complaints about that, a lot of doing it again.
What's the timeframe on the grant?
So the grant, they're estimating about August to September for making awards. But we have to get our application in May.
So it wouldn't be for the summer?
No, it probably would be like next spring maybe, right?
Well, no, we would start, we would start in the fall, if we were awarded, we would start in the fall.
But we'd still have the noise of summer?
For a little bit, yeah.
Looks like we're probably.
We're making progress.
Get some shrubs or something. Alright, do you have anything?
Very good for a short report. Good job.
Keeping your short reports down to an hour. Thank you very much, good job. Alright, so new business, any new business?
No.
New sort of business? Old business?
So I have two things. Did you, Jim, did you talk to FinCom about rescheduling the FinCom meeting, the joint meeting on the twenty-seventh?
I did, they would be in favor of Friday, twenty-sixth.
So we could go to that rural thing?
Yeah, that's fine, I'd like to go to the rural thing too. It's thirty-five dollars for it, we pay?
If everybody's going to go, if you tell me, we can get it, we can get it done, we can get it submitted.
Yeah, it's a sad day, it's on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, just.
So I'm good with it, I'm going.
What is it about?
The MMA?
Oh, yeah.
You want, you're going to?
We just have to make sure we schedule for a meeting. Yeah, we're going to be on that, not a meeting, but we're going out, we're going to be together, so.
Field trip.
Field trip.
And the other thing, what's going on with the rights master plan?
Weston and Sampson is working on it, they are, they are, they had a monthly meeting with me last month and they've been getting some information. I know they did a couple sites, site visits to the area and we're scheduled to have another monthly discussion at the end of this month.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any updates about that in a while, so.
Okay, and the FinCom joint meeting is the same time, nine o'clock, it's just the day before now, right?
Well, they said they could do the twenty-sixth, they didn't mention any time, so.
Send us an email once you get a time on that.
Okay, alright.
I'm available all day twenty-sixth. Hold on. I don't know if I could do that today, for what?
The twenty-sixth.
Yeah, because they think I might have training at the.
Twenty-fifth?
We have an executive meeting at two.
Which one's that for?
CPT.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we could do it after that.
Yes.
Before our new meeting next week.
I'll have to verify because I don't know if we're doing the meet, training on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, the twenty-fifth, if we do two to three for executive session, then we have three to.
Well, if they can do Thursday.
Sure, yeah.
Then we can do it. So if we do it Thursday with FinCom, that would work out.
Okay.
They're able to do it.
Okay.
But it's important for us to be there at the end of the night.
Massachusetts Municipal Associations.
Yes, thank you. Okay, do you have anything else?
No.
Alright, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir.
I do have an old business item, it was about a bill, we resolved that bill about the windows and we don't owe the bill because we paid them.
Okay.
And they received all the money according to everything and we're clear and free with that because we paid them and we paid them for the adjustments to the project. So unless they could prove what we owe them for, and it looks like it's the subcontractor coming at us, which we were paying the contractor, so if the subcontractor has an issue, he should be going to the contractor and getting his money because we paid the contractor fully for that. And if he's not paying them, then he needs to take the contractor to court or whatever and get his money if he has that. But we don't owe it, we paid everything for that. So that bill needs to go away, we don't owe it. You guys good with that?
Good job.
Well, this is a nasty good job, she tracked down all of the bills.
There was the thing about the plans and the hours and all that, right?
Yeah, no, yeah, it was all in there and even the adjustment, we made an adjustment, we gave them a little more and all that was paid and taken care of. So whatever they're coming, the subcontractor's coming at us with, he needs to go to the contractor and get because we paid the contractor full and that's who we had a contract with, so. It's done. You guys good?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any tipple?
Nope.
Mr. Bessie? Correspondence, we got a letter from Mr. Conrad about the railroad ties being moved from West Warren to Warren. And yes, we're, a lot of people notified us on that. And CSX staged all the railroad ties behind the train station in West Warren. My understanding is working, they're working on getting them, to move them from West Warren to wherever they're going to be finally at, but right now they moved them out of the West Warren area to Warren behind the train station. Did you want to elaborate on that, Mr. Conrad at all?
Joe Conrad, Board Health.
It's a short correspondence, you're here.
I guess you might say that I'm one of those people that, being proactive, I'm in the right place at the right time, especially to interview people as to what they're doing and why. I have to assume that sometime in the next month, CSX is going to bring out a couple of empty train cars to load all those railroad ties on. Rest assured that the Board of Health will be keeping an eye on it.
Very good. Yeah, they need to get rid of those things, we definitely don't want them hanging out. Thank you, sir, for letting us know what you've seen. Alright, next correspondence is Civic Plus Bill for FY twenty-five. They sent us an invoice or a proposal of this, a quote, and they have gone up quite a bit for our website. They went up from two thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-four cents to three thousand five hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Almost nine hundred dollars?
Almost nine hundred dollars, they went up in one year. So I don't know if we want to look at a different option for our website, but that's kind of ridiculous because the previous year they went up two hundred dollars and now they just went up nine hundred dollars. They almost, they went up a third, basically, third of the bill.
Is the description here what they are offering?
So.
Hosting and support?
Huh?
Is this the description for website hosting and support?
Yeah, which they barely do.
Yeah, there's no support at all.
Support, no, they, but again, we would have to, you know, again, they notified us this. This is a correspondence, not to deliberate on it or anything, but just so you guys are aware, I think this is something we should look into deeper because it's another bill that we're looking at. You know, we looked at the phones, we looked at the internet, the internet here and the email system and now our website's popping up and, you know, this is probably something we want to look at.
This is per year, right?
Yeah.
They're going to add five percent every year, if you look at this new quote.
Yep.
Number three, they're going to add five percent every year. I don't know why they did thirty-three percent, but.
What are the requirements for hosting the municipality website?
I'm sorry, requirements from?
Are there any different requirements?
Like government kind of stuff, right?
Yeah. Well, there's things on the websites that are important, like, you know, like the bid, you know, bid lists and different things like that. If you use it as an official place to post meetings, which we don't, we use the board out there, you know, that, you know, there's ADA requirements for, you know, understanding, you know, people with disabilities and having a website still accessible for them that they, you know, that the town should be following.
So this is just correspondence, so let's not really get into, go into it. My recommended is we should put this on an agenda.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
And discuss this because that's a pretty significant jump in one year. And to say that they're going to add five percent on top of that for each year following, it's going up and to be honest, I'm not really happy with the website.
No. No, but there's two different things, hosting is different than the website, so that's why I'm asking for the description over here. Like, quick question, what? like, quick question, what happens if we say no, we don't pay, what happens?
They could shut the, what, the website down.
Well, the hosting, but the website, that content we own.
No, they own, they own Civic Plus, which is the website design.
I doubt that we own the content.
We don't own the content.
Okay, we should talk about it.
That is their, that is their website.
Okay, we should talk about that.
We, we utilize their platform.
Because if we pro, if we provide a hosting, then we move everything to a new hosting, or no, we lose everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, we lose.
Let's talk about it.
We'd have to rebuild.
That's not right.
Yeah, we'd have to rebuild the whole thing, we don't own it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why this has always been kind of a sticking point. So, yeah, let's put it on a future agenda.
Okay.
To be able to discuss the website and what we're gonna do with this, because that's a significant jump in the bill for one year. All right, next thing is the Quabah Regional School District Certified Assessment and Payment Schedule. So we got a certified copy? I have not looked at this yet.
Well, yeah.
Is that what you were here for, Mr. Duff, or are you just hanging out for the meeting tonight?
A little above.
Oh, okay, yeah, we just got it, I, I haven't looked at it yet.
It's what we presented.
Did you want to talk about it at all?
No, it was the exact presentation that we, that the school committee had voted on, and that I presented to the Board of Selectmen and to the FinCom.
Okay, cool. Do you guys have any questions or correspondence?
Uh, no.
No, sir.
Okay, yeah, we get it. And then we got correspondence from the Maya House Ways and Means, and about the House Ways and Means Committee for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Five Spending Proposal, and that's actually good news, actually good news for the school, too, because the Ways and Means are proposing bringing up the, the amount per student from thirty dollars to a hundred and four dollars per student, which would be definitely helpful, and then they actually added rural aid to help the schools, which I don't know how much we would actually be getting in the end, but.
We did, just so you know, we do receive rural aid, it'll be interesting to see what they do with that rural aid number, it doesn't mean that it's gonna increase, there's a potential that may increase.
It's, um, it was funded at fifteen million this year, and then they're cutting it in half, right?
It's not an increase, it's a decrease.
So it's, they, they went to seven point five million.
So they increased the per pupil expend, or the per pupil above minimum, but they, it looks like they're proposing to decrease rural aid, so they're giving from one part and taking from the other, and both parts are what we use to offset the local assessment.
So we're not really gaining.
Could be a wash.
It's Robin Peterson.
It's way too early to know, but it's not too positives, it's positive and a negative, but we'll have to see which one outweighs the other one. I'm hoping the positive outweighs the negative, so we can continue to offset the local assessment.
And then, uh, special education.
If you qualify, okay.
There's a, there's a percentage we don't.
We don't qualify?
Well, it depends on what the percentage is that we discussed that, I know you guys were at that meeting when we discussed how you qualify for circuit breaker and the percentages. So we're hoping we get more, which will be helpful.
Yeah, every penny helps.
Yes, it does.
And the more we can get, the better, it would be nice to be able to, you know, the positive thing is, yes, we're getting a hundred and four dollars more, well, a hundred and four dollars per student, hopefully, potentially, if everything goes well, but in the end, it really doesn't add up a whole lot, so that would be, how many students?
Oh, it does, it's over a hundred thousand dollars, roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
Versus thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we'd be getting seventy thousand dollars more, so when you look at the big picture, seventy thousand dollars versus, you know, what's the total budget for the school, ten million dollars?
But it puts in that assessment below what it was last year, so it's actually an increase in the budget, so every penny does count.
Yeah.
I'd just like to see it more significant. I'd like to have, well, we're giving you five million dollars if you have your school. So, all right. But yes, we got that, and I think what, it goes from Ways and Means to the Governor, Mayor.
Goes to the Senate.
To the Senate, and then they gotta vote approved, but it could be amended on the Senate floor, too.
Yeah, and, and, and there's a conference committee, and then, you know, if they work out both, both, between the Senate and the House, and then they, if they have a compromise, then they'll bring it out together, and then they'll ultimately send it to the Governor.
So that a hundred and four can go back down to thirty dollars per student.
I'm hoping that it stays at a hundred and four.
Yeah, I do, too. Yeah, all right, well, it was good to see Ways and Means Committee is at least trying to take care of some of the parts for the students. There's more that can be done there, though. All right, next thing, well, did anybody else have any correspondence?
Uh, no, no, sir.
Comments and concerns, do you have any comments?
Uh, no.
You, sir?
I do, a couple ways ago, we did the, the building inspector did a form for complaints, so I, I did a test of doing it online. So I think it worked fine, so if you guys are okay, we can, you know, show this to the building inspector and see how he can, you know, start receiving, put it on the website.
Yeah, see, see if it works for him.
Yeah.
And then, if he's good with it, then.
Just, just another option to, to, you know, for, for the public to be able to do it. And the second one is, since we've been talking about phones, website, and all that, I did a test for, for dummies, and I went into our website, the one we've been talking about, and remember what we're talking, that the phones were down?
Yeah.
So I said, okay, let's look at it, I was actually gonna call that moment, but I went, and I couldn't find the phone in the first, in the first page.
Couldn't find what?
The phone number, to call.
Call who?
Us.
Oh, there's, the main number isn't on there?
No, it's not.
We don't have a phone number on it?
Yeah.
No, it's in the phone list, they're contacts.
Yeah, but it, okay, I go on the phone, what is, where is the phone list?
It's on the contacts.
Contacts?
Contact us.
Okay, contact us. And then, I don't see a phone. I don't see a phone number. Just emails. So that's the contact us, right?
It's not in the dropdown?
There's no phone number, it's just emails. So I, like I said, it was just a test for dummies, you know, me naive, oh, wait, I open the website.
If you go to the Board of Selectmen.
But that's too much.
Yeah.
It used to be right on the top over there, like, call this, this is our phone number, just saying.
Right underneath the address.
Yeah.
Bottom of the page.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, I'll add it.
Nothing on us, it's just saying.
And they contact us.
When we were discussing about the lines, I said, I wanna try it, I'm gonna put it on a speaker, but I couldn't find the phone number, you know, a very naive way of putting it. That's about it, okay.
So we'll add our phone number to the website.
Well, we're gonna have to add the highway, the police.
Well, no, because you get the highway, you call in departments.
Just our main number?
Yeah, just the main number.
Okay.
Because then they get the extensions that they can.
Well, they will, they will when the new phone system is.
When we get the new phone system.
We don't get extensions right now?
Well, you get extensions for everybody that has extensions in this building, but Cable doesn't, Sewer doesn't.
Yeah.
That's all right, I mean, we'll, we'll have.
We're gonna improve on those, but, but at least we can do is put our phone number on our website.
All right, I'll do it, I'll do it tomorrow.
This is how you can call us.
I'll do it tomorrow.
All right, all right, good catch, how many years has that gone on?
I guess that's why I don't call very often, because you can't find it.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff we gotta fix on the website, there's, yeah, we're getting complaints all the time of all the stuff. All right, so I have no comments and concerns, you distracted me on that one.
Sorry.
Mr. Farrar, did you have anything?
No.
Anybody from the public have any comments?
Mr. Duff? I'd just like to follow up, I did follow up from last week's meeting with Mr. Ferrera on Friday regarding whether the regional agreement is expired or not. And I believe Mr. Ferrera and I are in agreement that the regional agreement does not expire. However, I know that it was stated repeatedly that it was expired, the regional agreement does not expire.
It does not expire? How does it not expire?
So, if, if, if there's no new agreement, it just continues on.
It doesn't, it never.
But after, after so many years, we can propose.
You can make amendments, you can propose amendments, yeah.
Yeah. So we can do that.
The agreement does not expire.
No, but we can propose a new agreement.
All I'm saying is, it was stated repeatedly that the agreement was expired, it does not expire.
My misunderstanding.
No, that's okay, that's why, I just wanted to make sure, I said I followed up, and so I'm following up.
From, from the future, now we can, now we know, we can make it, a, a proposed new regional agreement, and request other towns to work with us on that. So, and that's probably something we should be doing here in the soon future.
Yeah.
So, okay, anything else? Anybody else have any comments?
Well, last Thursday, when I see Rabies Clinic, the highway garage.
Yep.
The vet told me there were fifty animals.
Yep.
About ten cats, forty dogs, and some of the dogs were from other towns, so they had to be licensed in their own town rather than one.
We couldn't license them here, all right.
Unless they're willing to move here.
Yeah, they're building new houses, so. Thank you, anybody else have anything?
I got my name on my cup, Tim Boshner.
Okay.
I always forget it.
Did you have something other than, than that, Tim?
So I don't know if you ever heard on the news about MGM, I, I guess you probably have.
No.
It's for sale, if you guys are interested.
MGM?
Well, no, well, I, yeah, I don't think Springfield's gonna let them sell it, though, right, isn't?
Are they really for sale already?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that deal fell through already?
Well, they, they want it, they want out of the city, yeah, yeah, it, it just doesn't work.
Who's gonna buy it?
I don't know, I don't know.
Well, it's kind of a specific thing to do, here, here's the thing that worried me. Anyway, MGM.
Yeah.
Springfield is the third largest city in Mass, also in the fabulous four-one-three area, and Springfield was voted number four, best city to live in.
Unless you live there.
Right. And here's the spookiest thing of all, MGM is owned by, anybody wanna guess?
Disney. No.
Better.
Chinese? Chinese?
Probably someday.
Microsoft.
Microsoft.
Now, tell us, sir.
Amazon.
What?
Amazon.
Really?
I, I don't know that.
I was close.
Amazon, so here's the scariest thing to me, so I would like to see the board focus, I know you guys are doing long range things, which is great.
Yeah.
But I think you need to do today's stuff more, because I'm thinking anybody that's in business finds out that Amazon couldn't make it in Springfield, you know, it's not gonna be.
But Amazon didn't make it in Charlton either.
Yeah.
They're building a giant facility that they're never gonna open.
Well, they build it too, and what's that? But Amazon pulls in eleven million dollars an hour around the clock, seven, three sixty-five. So I think they're not, it's not about the money, I don't think, anyway. But that's my concern, I think, I don't think anyone's gonna come in into the fabulous four-one-three that quickly, you know, after maybe seeing that, you know, it's kind of a bummer, really, when you think about it.
Yeah, sad to see businesses go under and not, not do so well in a city, but also a lot of people don't wanna go to cities anymore.
Whatever the reason is.
They, they wanna stay away from them.
Right, but I think people that are planning to spend millions, again, in the fabulous four-one-three, may be thinking twice, so I, if, whatever business wanted to come in here yesterday or today, I think you guys need to.
Well, we're always keeping an open mind, and invite, you know, people to talk, and we're always welcome of any business to, to come in here within reason. There's certain things we don't want to move into our communities, because the community would not.
But I think the long range stuff, maybe even longer down the road, I think, after, you know, that example, but I mean, I could be wrong, I don't know.
Well, we, the, the town needs some sort of commercial business, and that's the hope, to get that commercial business within the community, 'cause honestly, you can't rely on taxing the residents.
No.
After a while, it becomes too much of a burden with, with the economy the way it is, it's getting harder and harder to do, it's harder and harder to keep a school running, it's harder and harder to keep everything going, and everything, everybody wants the best in their community, but it costs money, and then you gotta pay those people to make those things run. So it gets very difficult, and the only way you can really do that is bring in some sort of commercial to your community to get tax revenue, to create tax revenue.
What if we can do it today, or tomorrow, or next week?
Definitely. Yeah, I don't, these things are planned years in advance.
It's school, it's school vacation that.
Yeah, it's school, school vacation, we'll, we'll, we'll generate another hundred million dollars for the town next week for you.
And to save some money on your website, let's share with the library, what do you think?
Well, the library is its own entity.
Yeah, it's private.
It's private.
But they're willing to share.
Yeah, but we also can't do certain things within reason. You know, it's, it's like the Warren Water District, people keep on asking us to, to deal with the water issues within the town, you know, whether it's West Warren or Warren, and we have no say, it's not ours, it's a private entity. So, we can't do anything about it.
Yeah, limited.
Not even limited, we're not even included, they have their own boards, they have their own panels, they have their own voting, they have their own fees, they're their own bed.
Well, it's funny you said that, 'cause over the years, I've watched different town selectman meetings, and I found it kind of funny, because I'll be watching a meeting, and, and it hits me that three months earlier, another town was going through the same exact thing, and they spent money for the research, and, you know, looking to it and all that stuff, and I've seen it more than one time, you know, over the years, basically the same issues, you know, and everybody ends up spending, you know, the money individually, somehow, maybe if that stuff was, I know every town's in competition, or whatever you wanna call it, for, you know, grants and stuff.
Well, e- each town's also unique, too, because it's based on population, the income level within that community, the size, the resources, there's, there's a lot of factors that change it, what, what fits for one town is completely different to what our town is.
Right, it won't be the exact.
Right, they compare us to a city sometimes, and it's like, well, this city does this, well, that's a city, completely different structure, different way things doing, you know, you can't, can't compare us to that, we're completely different than that. So, you know, and that's why you have different departments, then they also have their own bylaws and things that they have to comply with, and town meetings, and some towns have select boards, some towns have mayors, you know, they're all set up different.
Well, I think someday, artificial intelligence will be running every town.
No, it's too early for that.
Next week?
No, it's not right.
Give it a couple of years.
Maybe twenty years.
All I can picture is, like, the Terminator movies.
Yeah.
The lawnmower taking over, and instead of mowing you lawn at three P M, it mows you lawn at three A M. All right, anything else? Anybody have anything? Is nobody on Zoom?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, we already bored everybody to sleep.
Yeah.
All right, so moving on from comments and concerns, next meeting is Thursday, April twenty-fifth at six P M, that will be April twenty-fifth at six P M, we do not have a meeting on April eighteenth because it is school vacation week, and everybody needs a break, so, no meeting next week, it will be April twenty-fifth at six P M. and everybody needs a break, so, no meeting next week, it will be April twenty-fifth at six P M. We do have an executive session coming up, and once that, that is decided, then we will post that and go with that.
And potential FinCom meeting.
And potential FinCom too, um, but our next meeting is the twenty-fifth for regular select. Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Richard Hacker, aye.
Fifty Bitties, aye.
David DuBray, aye, we are adjourned.